Hello. Good evening. Welcome to our council meeting this evening. And the first thing we'll do is have a call to order and a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Tonight, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Commander Haywood Beckley of the American Legion Post 365. Welcome.
All rise for pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, with hearts humble, with a sense of our responsibility, and yet proud of the confidence placed in us by the citizens of Vista, with hearts grateful for the rich heritage bequeathed to us by our fathers, yet also determined to be ever vigilant to preserve it, we ask your blessing on this meeting, that it may be fruitful in its accomplishments and lasting in the good it affects. Be with us in our thinking and guide us as we work for you and our country and comrades. Teach us to think wisely and carefully before we speak, to act with courage and conviction for the good of all, and to deal charitably with one another as we may continue to enjoy mutual respect. So may we serve you in spirit and in truth, that our accomplishments will be built upon firm foundations of charity and justice. Thus may our work both in public sessions and committees bring credit to the city council and be of benefit to those we seek to serve. Heavenly Father, as we depart this gathering, give us a safe journey home to family and friends, keep us true to our principles and strong in our faith. Grant peace and eternal rest to our departed comrades, comfort and consolidation to their families and friends, and keep us ever in our love, mercy that we may carry on for God and country. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commander. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that, as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Bueno Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Bueno Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, actually, we had no closed session today. So the next thing I have is we're doing a lifesaver award presentation to Kelly Hodouanas, who's the out-and-about driver. So she'll come up and join me down there, and I will ask Rick Minnick, also our fire chief, to come up and join us. I'm going to, I'll read you a little bit about this. This is, Kelly did this amazing thing here. So let me read this for you. The background is Kelly has been a part-time bus driver for the city's Out and About Senior Transportation Program since January 2013. She was hired after she received her Class B Commercial Driver's License permit. In July 2013, she began also driving the bus shuttle at the Moonlight Amphitheater and as a backup home-delivered meal driver. Kelly and her family are Vista residents. So in the incident, the shuttle bus component of the city's Out and About Program provides transportation five days a week for medical appointments and for shopping. On Friday, March 28, 2014, after driving the Walmart-Target lunch route, Kelly was in the left turn lane going from University Avenue onto Rubellini Drive on her way to take the 10 bus passengers home. There was a car in the far-left turn lane of University Drive that started to turn on the light but stopped after entering into the intersection. When the light turned green for the oncoming traffic, Kelly could see that no one was stopping to help the woman and the disabled car in the intersection. Instead, they were driving dangerously close on either side of her broken-down car. Kelly wanted to help but knew her first responsibility was the safety of her passengers. After watching the cars nearly hit this woman and no assistance being given her, Kelly asked her passengers if they would mind if she stopped the bus in the intersection to detour the oncoming traffic around this woman and her car as a means to improve her safety. All of the passengers agreed, even though this could have put the bus at risk of being hit by an oncoming car. While this was going on, a man came to help the woman push the stranded driver car out of the way, but they were unsuccessful. Kelly got out of the bus to assist, and when the young man opened the hood of the car, they discovered that the engine was on fire. Kelly quickly went back into the bus for the fire extinguisher and returned to the engine fire. She then told the woman and the young man to move away from the car. When they were a safe distance from the car, she extinguished the fire, discharging the entire fire extinguisher. After the fire was extinguished, the young man and Kelly attempted again to move the car, and at that time, an off-duty police officer arrived and took over the situation. So then Kelly boarded the bus and proceeded to take the drivers home. So we congratulate Kelly on her important incident. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So I'm looking to see, I don't have any, do I have any? No. I have no, no one from the audience has pulled anything from our consent calendar. If another council member would like anything pulled, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
C-12. C-12. C-12, sorry.
Okay. Removing C-12. And then, will you second the balance for the remainder of the consent calendar? Or you?
Yeah, I can second the remainder.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the consent calendar except for item C-12. Okay, please cast your votes.
Would the city clerk record my no vote on C-7 and C-9?
Okay. I guess then the next thing we'll do is we'll, would you like a report, John?
No. It's fine. I just have a couple of questions, actually. It's on page 223, under Public Works. So I had a question, you know, one of our goals, two of our goals that are addressed, two of the council's goals are addressed on this page, I feel. One of which is the park maintenance. You know, that's really important to council, and I just noticed that we're lowering the budget for park maintenance, and I just want to know why and how and where that's happening.
We've, Councilman, or Deputy Mayor, we've achieved some savings within our landscape contract with Aztec Landscaping, and we've provided for efficiencies over the last few years as we've streamlined the process. We are, however, increasing the amount of money that we are using to water the parks, to get the parks into a better condition than they are now.
Well, that's good.
But the decrease you see there is primarily due to contract maintenance.
Okay, well, that's good.
In addition, we have lessened capital outlay this year in terms of large purchases that are planned for over a number of years. Less is proposed for purchase in 2014, '15.
Okay. And then, the other question has to deal with, I guess, blight in our city under the graffiti abatement. I noticed that we're spending the same amount of money year after year. Is that, I mean, by spending more money in that area, would we be able to fight graffiti more or better abatement that way?
We currently have two individuals from the Public Works Department that abate graffiti with the necessary equipment. Our typical incident is to try to get the graffiti out within 24 to 48 hours. If there was another body added to the graffiti side of the house, you would be able to tackle more graffiti within the city.
Okay. I think that would be a goal for us, maybe for the following year, to add a body.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions on the budget? No? No, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next item, we're going to our discussion items on our calendar, and the first one, D-1, is 2014 candidate statements of qualifications. And it has to do with establishing the number of words to 200 or 400 to be permitted in a candidate's statement of qualifications for the offices of mayor and member of the city council for our general election November 4. So do I have any discussion on that? If you want to report, do you need to report on it, do you? No?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a 400-word limit on the statement of qualifications.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I don't have any speakers, so, okay. Please cast your votes then. That motion passes unanimously, and so it will be 400 maximum number of words on the candidate's statement. The next item, D-2, is a five-year capital improvement program, fiscal year 2014-'15 capital improvement project budget. And John Conley, are you going to do the report on that?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Thank you. John Conley, Community Development Director and Director of Engineering. With me is Greg Mayer, City Engineer. We have been diligently working on our next year's capital improvement budget. The capital improvement program is a five-year budget tool that the city utilizes to fund capital improvements or public improvements that the city's building. It's typically done for one year in terms of the money that we put into the budget, but we carry projects over, over a five-year period for planning purposes and fund them until they're constructed. The CIP includes a summary of funding sources and budget uses, as well as project details, which I'll cover briefly in the presentation. First, I want to talk about a few things that we've achieved in this last fiscal year, so I'll cover those briefly. In the area of public facilities, we installed some new city entryway monuments at six locations. In the parks and recreation, we constructed a new bridge over Aguahedeyona Creek down in Buena Vista Park. And we also replaced the totlot equipment at Shatter Ridge Park. In the area of streets, we did a widening project on North Avenue, which was partial safe routes to school money to provide pedestrian improvements to Maryland Elementary. And we did a traffic capacity enhancement project on South Melrose at Faraday to provide additional capacity at that intersection due to traffic constraints. In the area of traffic signals, we completed new signals at Emerald and Dave, which included street frontage improvements, as well as at North Melrose and West Los Angeles. And in the area of sanitation, a major age and condition rehab project where we lined about 10.7 miles of sewer, reinforced several laterals, and replaced a number of manholes. Cost for that project was a little over $3 million. And in the Bueno Sanitation District, we completed a major connection project, Watson Way, where we had to tunnel through a large area of residential development in order to make the connection, and that project was $6.2 million, all completed this year. For this next year, this is the funding and the areas of funding that we're proposing for the CIP. The total, $71 million. You'll note that $57 million of that is spent in the Vista Sanitation District, which I'll cover. Some very large sewer projects are proposed. The other number worth mentioning is in the area of streets, where we're spending about $7 million for our normal overlay and reconstruction, as well as slurry seal. So new projects to mention this year, East Vista Way, a raised median between Civic Center Drive and Williamson Street. That's a grant-funded project that we'll be working on. The money's being added from the grant, as well as upgrading the signals and interconnecting the signal network south of State Route 78, so the southern portion of the city. Also grant-funded Highway Safety Improvement Program grant-funded projects. In the area of parks and recreation, we have a new skate park identified. We have some money included for preliminary design, based on the council's approval of some locations. We're proposing another pedestrian bridge along Aguahedeyona Creek to create a loop in Buena Vista Park for pedestrian and bike users. We're replacing the totlot equipment at the wave, and we're completing the Buena Creek Trail, which is a grant-funded project as well, out to Brangle Terrace Park. So new projects in the area of public facilities, we're proposing to enhance the downtown Vista lighting, so the area in the historic downtown, to look at the existing lighting and add new light standards, as well as refine the types of lighting that's down there to improve pedestrian safety. And we'll be redoing the public works yard to increase, improve drainage and maintain the surfacing. As I mentioned, we're upgrading signals south of 78. That's a grant-funded project. We're doing the East Vista Way median. And we'll be widening a short sliver of Civic Center Drive, which is between the railroad tracks and Phillips Street on the southbound side for the Inland Rail Trail project, as well as to provide some traffic capacity. In the sanitation division, we have a couple of projects noted. Vista Carlsbad Interceptors, our trunk line, as well as some pump station rehabilitation studies. And in Buena, we'll be doing a number of rehabilitation lining projects throughout the district, as well as another pump station rehabilitation study. There's a number of existing projects which I'm not going to go through in detail. I'm happy to answer any questions about them. Some things worth mentioning in terms of projects that are in here for funding, we're still allocating the majority of our Sandag Streets money to reconstruction and slurry seal to maintain the streets in accordance with the council's goal. And we're allocating a fair amount of money toward intersection improvements for the Paseo-Santa Fe project in order to mitigate the traffic impacts that may occur as a result of that project. In the area of sewer, as I mentioned, there's a large amount of money being spent in the Vista District. That's to replace the major interceptor line through Carlsbad. This is a project that's shared with both Vista and Carlsbad, where Vista is on the hook for a little over 50 percent. And in Buena, we'll be doing another Forest Main extension, as well as some work on the pump station at Buena Creek. As I mentioned before, we're still spending a fair amount of money on our resurfacing and slurry seal. This is in accordance with the council's goal. This year, we've already contracted for $3.8 million worth of reconstruction, which will start in July, and we're programming out $1.6 million annually for the next four years, which is the transnet money that we're allocated by Sandag. On the same slide, under slurry seal, we'll be spending $1 million on our slurry seal project, which is the maximum amount that we can spend on maintenance with Sandag money this next year, as well as programming out that money over the next four years. Worth mentioning, an ongoing project, Paseo-Santa Fe, so we're starting construction on that. Phase one is Main Street to Ocean View. That's about $4 million. Phase two, the next phase down to Oklahoma from Ocean View, is approximately another $4 million, and we're programming money for that. And the final phase, Oklahoma Street to Palo Vista, with a tag of about $6 million is unfunded, but we're still programming design money for that phase of it. The wet utility construction's begun. We've been able to cobble together a number of grants to pay for this phase, and we're hoping we can do the same for the next phase. And we're hoping that can start in 2016 if funding is available. As far as the CIP document, the various commissions reviewed the report. Traffic Commission reviewed it in March, Parks and Rec Commission in April, and the Planning Commission has to make a finding of conformity with the general plan, which occurred in May. And with that, staff's recommending approval. Before I end, I just want to thank a few people that worked on the document, including all the engineering staff, Greg Mayer and his staff, as well as Mary in Finance, a new employee who really helped us out a lot at the last minute, and Jeanette Ferris, who shepherded it through a rough patch for us. So I appreciate all their help. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the council? I don't have any speakers today on that. Anybody want to say anything? Oh, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff and everyone who worked on this. It does align with council's goals for what we're looking for in the vision that we have for the city, and I'm excited for the projects that we have finishing, the sewer realignment and the skate park and the Memorial Park over here and Paseo Point. So I think this is a really good start for us in Vista, and I'm excited when these projects will be finished. And I want to say thank you for all of your hard work. It's appreciated for everybody. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to thank you guys for staying aligned with our goals. Particularly excited to see the $7.5 million set aside for street improvements. It's something that the city sorely needs, so that'll be good for the city. Can you remind me why we're doing the Sycamore State Route East? What is it? East off-ramp?
Off-ramp at 78.
The Sycamore, yeah, off 78. Why are we doing it, not Caltrans again?
That was a project for which we won a grant from Caltrans to construct the project, and so we felt it was a capacity need for the city as well. Served our business park. We were getting congestion on the 78, so we applied for a grant, and they funded it. And we're building it with the majority of their grant money, but because construction costs and their permitting requirements were above and beyond what we initially anticipated, we are having to put some of our own money into it to complete it.
Okay, because, so the $218,000, does that represent the extra money, or is that Caltrans?
Yes, that represents the extra money.
It is?
Yes. There is some developer-funded mitigation money in there from earlier development of the business park off La Marada, and the rest is traffic fees.
Okay.
I might add that in the future, we will probably not be taking on projects within the Caltrans right of way.
I appreciate that. It never works out the way you want it to, right? It's always more expensive. I just have a couple more questions. I noticed we had $60,000 going for townsite drive-storm drain in two different places. It looks like some of it's coming from traffic impact fees and the other from drainage fees, which seems like that would make sense, that it would come from there. Why from the traffic impact fees? Is that just another bucket that we're allowed to tap into, or?
We collect very little in drainage fees, because our drainage fees are not very much. The townsite project is a significant project, because we have to remove a lot of improvements to replace an H-pipe that's deteriorating. We're trying to put whatever money we can into it. The traffic fees cover some, also, road improvements that will incur as part of the project, so in an effort to combine the two things and make the project work, we're putting some traffic money into it.
Okay. And then, last but not least, the downtown-specific intersection improvements. I just noticed the $600,000, is that separate from what we've already discussed, or?
We are adding money to that project this year, correct?
Yeah, correct. We're going to add $600,000 to the existing funding. The initial funding was just to study further what the priorities would be in that area, so we're actually looking to add construction money so we can take on the first phases of the project.
So just for the audience here, where exactly would that be?
It's a number of intersections that were studied, based on modeling of the traffic in the area and how it would disperse, based upon the narrowing down from four lanes to two lanes. So it's about eight different locations and intersections in and around Paseo-Santa Fe.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Councilmember Coles.
I'd be remiss if I didn't applaud you and your department for being proactive and really preparing us for the future. I think you've got two things in play here. One is maintenance, preventive maintenance for structures and roadways that are in danger of becoming weakened, but second is preparing us for some of the future growth we see happening here in the city. And I see this as a preparation for some of the vibrancy we expect in our city, not only from business, but from our residences. So thank you so much. I know a lot of work went into this, and the devil is in the details, and you, as you've explained, you've found ways to make the budgets work for these. So thank you.
I'd also like to thank everybody who worked on this. I know it's a team effort, and it looks like a lot of good projects this year will make a change in our city, which is always good to see that. So if I don't have any more discussion, then I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is a thing everyone is here for tonight, I think, is what we have this big crowd for. So it's a public hearing. Public hearing number one, appeal of the Planning Commission, 14-299 Santa Fe Vista Apartments, located at 1375 South Santa Fe. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have 29 speakers. So do you want to hear the speakers first, or would you like to report first?
I'd like to hear the speakers first.
Hear the speakers first? Okay. You want to make the report after, or do you want to make the report before?
Mayor, I believe that our appeals procedure and our resolution calls for the staff report first.
Okay. Staff report first then, John.
Sure thing. This is an appeal of a site development plan for the Santa Fe Vista Apartments. The applicant is Tim Winslow. This project was heard by the Planning Commission on the 20th of May, and an appeal was filed after their decision on the project. It's a site development plan for 114 multifamily apartment units at the southwest corner of South Santa Fe and Mar Vista. The project proposes a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartment units, about 2,000 square feet of recreation building, pool, and outdoor seating area, 205 onsite parking spaces, including a combination of garages, carports, and uncovered spaces, and five affordable units of the 114. The project site, as I mentioned, the southwest corner of Mar Vista and Santa Fe, it's 4.5 acres. To the north is the mortuary, commercial designation. East is South Santa Fe Avenue and vacant land, as well as commercial uses with residential behind. To the west and south is the Sprinter rail line and single-family residences. This property was designated commercial historically and was re-designated as part of the general plan update in 2012 for mixed use. The land use designations are shown on the slide. The mixed-use designation is purple, which covers the commercial corridor running from Mar Vista to the north, as well as from Cypress to the north along Santa Fe, and runs all the way through the downtown area. Commercial neighborhood designation to the south, where the Arco AM PM gas station is, as well as across Mar Vista Drive, where the existing commercial building is. The vacant property across the street is zoned for multifamily, undeveloped, and the commercial properties to the north are in the mixed-use zone as well. All of the yellow is medium-low-density residential, R1, single-family residential. Important to note that the mixed-use designations allow for residential, multifamily, or commercial, or both on the site, so a standalone residential project is a conforming use. These are pictures of the project site, looking in various directions. You can note up in the upper-left-hand corner, the Sprinter line and retaining wall that's behind the property to the north, to the northeast, across the street. You'll note the commercial center, where the Sunrise Cafe and a number of other commercial businesses are. To the south is the AM PM, Mini-Mar, as you move up the hill, and to the southwest is the Sprinter line and residential behind. The site development plan proposes seven three-story apartment buildings, a centrally located pool and recreation building, some smaller outdoor use areas adjacent to the street, and concealed parking in the rear of the property, as well as in a number of garages. Each building would have about, between 13 to 21 units each. The unit sizes range from 701 square feet for a one-bedroom, one-bath, to just under 1,200 square feet for a three-bedroom, two-bath unit. The 114 total units consist of 109 market rate units and five inclusionary or affordable units, and I'll touch on that. The parking includes 77 garages, 37 carports, and 91 uncovered spaces, for a total of 205, which meets the requirement for the MU zone. Two additional spaces are provided for loading, and all the carports are located in the interior of the project, consistent with our design guidelines. The density bonus is part of the project, which includes a request to increase the request to increase the budget. density. Under state law, an applicant can, in exchange for the provision of a certain number of affordable units in their project, obtain an increase in density, and that's allowed by right. The city's chapter that regulates that on Chapter 1890 allows an increase of 20% density in exchange for 5% of the units as very low-income units. The applicant's requesting that, which allows a 20% density bonus, would allow up to 116 units. He's requesting 114, which is 24.9 units per acre and within the allowance under the code. He's also allowed one development concession, which is to reduce his number of loading spaces from eight to two. Very low income, for the information, for the council is defined as no greater than 50% of the area median income in San Diego County. That equates to an annual income of about $41,300 for a family of four. The landscape plan is shown in the overhead. It's about 51,000 square feet of landscaping, approximately 25% of the site. It includes screening from the adjacent properties to the south of the site, behind the railroad tracks. There's a couple of larger tree specimens proposed, and I'll cover that in response to some of the planning commission issues that were raised. This is just colored elevation of the landscape plan, showing the recreation area in the center and the enhanced entry. There are some enhanced paved areas throughout the site as well for stormwater detention. The elevations that were provided with the application show craftsmen-style architecture with the use of stucco and wood, trellises, some sloped roofs, consistent with other multifamily development. I wanted to note some changes in the architectural package that were provided to the council. The elevations on the bottom of the screen show the revised elevations that were submitted after the planning commission hearing. The elevations on the top are the original elevations that were provided with your packets. So you'll note there were some changes in terms of the tower locations and the type of roofs, as well as the colors, but the design elements generally stay the same on the building. This was the architect's, the applicant's architect, attempt to address the planning commission's concerns about the architecture. This shows the back of the buildings with a similar treatment, removal of some of the flat roofs in favor of a pitched roof elevation and some cornices. The site elevations remain unchanged. The floor plans, again, show a number of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The first-story floor plan is shown in the upper-right-hand corner with the garages on the backside of the elevation. The garages would not internally connect to the internal hallway, but would provide space for each of the units. The project included an environmental impact report. A notice of preparation was distributed in September of last year for 30 days, and comments were solicited pertaining to the environmental issues to be reviewed in the EIR. The draft environmental impact report was circulated for a 45-day public review period in January through March of this year. A number of written comments were received from several agencies and individuals. The final EIR, which is in the record that is before you this evening, includes all of the comments received and all of the staff's responses, as well as corrections to the document. The project EIR identifies significant unmitigable traffic impacts at three specific intersections at Mar Vista and Avocado, at Mar Vista and the 78 westbound ramps, and at Mar Vista and the 78 eastbound ramps. And I'll cover those issues. Impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, and traffic, with the exception of those noted, would be mitigated to less than significant levels. There's a mitigation monitoring and reporting program included in the document that identifies all of the different measures that are to be implemented to mitigate the project's impacts, as well as findings required under the state law and a statement of overriding considerations with which the council is required to adopt in an instant where there's significant impacts that cannot be mitigated. On May 20th, as I noted, the planning commission adopted the project with the following conditions: to include a raised landscape median along the project frontage on South Santa Fe, which would allow left turns into the project but prohibit left turns out; to provide architectural improvements along the rear elevations of the building; and to provide a management plan to be approved by city staff that's consistent with the San Diego Crime-Free Housing The staff has looked at those conditions and is not recommending including a raised median along the street frontage. The applicant's recommendation of the proposed project is shown in the overhead in terms of the existing striping and allowed turn movements that are on the site. This would allow left into the site as well as left out. There's currently a prohibited right turn only on Cypress as it approaches South Santa Fe, and there were concerns expressed at the planning commission about illegal left turns out of Cypress or people that take the left there instead of staying to the right and potential conflicts with the project driveway. And so the planning commission recommended a raised median to eliminate that potential conflict. And I'll show you on the next slide. This shows a concept of what that median would look like. It would run along the project frontage, allow for turns into Cypress on the southbound approach, as well as turns into the project on the northbound approach, but would restrict turns off of Cypress to right only and turns out of the project driveway to right only. The staff's not recommending this approach for a couple of reasons, which were discussed in the staff report, but briefly, the right-out-only pushes project traffic to the intersection at Mar Vista and Santa Fe, which although it operates in an acceptable condition, just adds congestion to that intersection to force U-turns. Majority of services for this project are located to the north in Vista, not to the south in the county. And we don't believe if the traffic restrictions at Cypress are followed that there is a significant conflict at this location. However, in light of the concerns that were expressed at the planning commission, we did come up with an alternative, which is the staff-recommended alternative that's shown in the overhead. This would include a raised median at Cypress where the existing candlesticks are, the traffic delineators, to force the right coming out of the street, as well as a raised median across Santa Fe in that location only, that would restrict the right turns, I'm sorry, left turns off of Cypress onto Santa Fe. But it would still allow left turns onto Cypress on the southbound approach, as well as left turns into the project on the northbound approach. It also allows full access out of the project driveway. So this alternative would address the concern expressed at the commission with the conflict on Cypress, but still allow full turn movements out of the project driveway. The staff didn't feel that the project driveway turn movements were significant in light of all the other commercial driveways along this stretch of South Santa Fe that have similar allowances. Traffic distribution from the project. This shows the project site, as well as the project traffic report distribution that was prepared by the applicant's traffic engineer. It anticipated that 45% of the traffic coming out of the project would go northbound on Santa Fe, 55% would go southbound, and of that 55%, 30% would go up Mar Vista towards the freeway, and 25% would go further down Santa Fe. The numbers in parentheses show the project's average daily traffic, as assumed by the project traffic report, so about 300 trips to the south, to the north, 376 to the south, which is broken into about 200 on Mar Vista and 170 on South Santa Fe. So I wanted to just discuss Mar Vista because that was a big issue at the planning commission and give you some insight into the staff's look at this issue over the past few years. So shown in the orange in the overhead is the existing alignment that runs basically from the 78 interchange down to the intersection of Avocado and out to Santa Fe. This is a curvy, constrained roadway with a tight, very limited right-of-way and paved surface, so improvements are difficult to make within the existing alignment. In the late 80s, the city studied two different alignments to correct this problem and create what I'll call a collector road through this area that would move traffic from the freeway down to Santa Fe in a more efficient manner. One is what I'll call the Mar Vista realignment. This would essentially keep the roadway in its current alignment through the curve at the top of the hill, but as it comes down the hill, it would straighten out the curves and end up taking out a couple of residential properties in order to make the curve at the corner of Avocado. And so it would cut off into there. That would be a 72-foot right-of-way. It would provide for four lanes of traffic and would create a collector road. I think for obvious reasons, at the time this alignment study was done, the city chose not to pursue it because of the significant cost of acquiring all of that private property and the impact to those neighborhoods. The other alignment analysis was done, looks at a northerly alignment, which is shown by the red hashed line on the overhead, which would put the road up an adjacent street by the freeway and connect through private property to Phillips Street. You can see by the construction of the road that's on the aerial, if I can go back, that the connection was intended for at one point, but there is a major piece of private property there that prohibits that, and the city at this point has never pursued that connection. We don't feel that that would be fair to the neighborhood in Phillips that would be adversely impacted by a lot of new traffic. So we try to, we prefer to try to solve the issue within the existing alignment. So that said, the impact at Mar Vista, Avocado, we feel is the most critical. It's where the project impact occurs and where the significance criteria is exceeded. The applicant's engineer provided a drawing, which is shown in the sketch on the right of this overhead, which would provide for some widening and some lane enhancement to improve traffic flow through this area. Would basically widen the street to provide some through and dedicated lanes as he approached the intersection. However, this alternative still relies on a stop-controlled intersection. And so even though you create additional capacity for cars to get down the hill and through the intersection or up the hill and through the intersection, they still have to stop, and so it doesn't really solve the problem. From the staff perspective, there's two possible ways to solve the issue. One is through a signal and enhancement of the intersection to provide a signal. The other is through a traffic circle or some kind of a traffic control device that would allow better flow through the area. From the staff perspective, we feel like a circle could be a feasible option here and could be relatively cost-effective. With the council's interest, we could include that in the upcoming CIP or an amendment to it. The applicant's going to contribute over $400,000 in traffic fees, as well as a fair share contribution to the ultimate improvement at this intersection. So if the council's interested in pursuing future improvements, we can put that money toward those improvements as well. With regard to public notice, a number of concerns were expressed about public notice and the public not being notified of the project. The staff followed what our normal requirements are, which I'll summarize briefly for the council. It requires that we notify all the properties within 500 feet of the subject site, which is shown in the aerial, the properties that are shown in red. We have to post a sign on the property at the time the application is submitted for the application itself, which has been there for a number of months, as well as a sign notifying of the public hearing 10 days in advance of the project, which was posted. And we have to publish a notice in the North County Times 10 days in advance of the hearing. So the public notification requirements that were followed are those listed. With respect to cumulative development in the area, there was a concern raised about a lot of other multifamily and high-density projects proposed in this area. So to clarify, there are three other applications pending. None of these have been approved, but have all been submitted. Number one, shown just to the north of the commercial center where the Sunrise Cafe is known as Brandy Wine Homes, that's a proposal for 35 apartment units, which also includes a density bonus. Number two, to the south of the property near the city boundary, is a project that was just submitted yesterday for 51 apartment units. That's a two-story project. And number three, shown at the end of Phillips Street to the south of the site, is a single-family subdivision of 23 units that's proposed. That would also require annexation, and all of those projects will require approval of either the planning commission or the city council. The inland rail trail is a component that is worth mentioning, runs by the project, will be constructed starting next year, takes a two, it's a two-year construction timeframe, so they're anticipating completion by 2017. Would be shortly after construction of this project if it were to be approved. Would provide an access point to Honalei Elementary to the south, which is the elementary school serving the site. So there would be a Class 1 off-street facility provided for access to students to the project as well as occupants of the project to the transit centers to the north. And finally, a letter was submitted to the council, which I'm sure you all read, from Mr. Looney, who's a local architect that I respect very much, who pointed out that the architecture of this project is very similar to some of the other projects recently approved by the city. So I provided some examples of some of the other projects for your information, and he is right, there are a number of features that are similar. But in the staff's defense, I do want to say that we don't always have the ability of telling the architect what type of architecture we would like them to use. We have design guidelines that we have to follow that require that they have things like varying roof lines and use different materials and colors and textures, and they have articulation on their building, and their buildings are sited accordingly, et cetera. In reviewing their architectural elevations, they have met our design criteria, so in staff's opinion, it is sufficient. In the council's view, that may not be the case, but you're free to ask the applicant for additional improvements this evening if that's what you desire, but that's just a summary of where we stand on the architectural enhancements. For reference, the project in the upper-left-hand corner is the North Santa Fe Affordable Development that's under construction right now. That's 68 units across from the Sprinter Station on North Santa Fe. And the project in the upper-right-hand corner is Lincoln Properties that's adjacent to Sports Park and Beau Beer. That's a 290 condominium unit apartment, or I'm sorry, condo project that was approved by the planning commission last year. And then two other projects, just for reference, upper-left is the North Melrose Apartments that's under construction right now, adjacent to the Sprinter Station at Melrose and Oceanside Boulevard. And in the upper-right corner is the Paseo Point Affordable Project on Main Street at Santa Fe. The proposed project is on the bottom. And with that, the staff recommendation is to approve the EIR and the proposed project. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Apparently I have some special rules here that we have to follow, and I didn't know that when I first started. So with this, I will ask any council members for any disclosure statements. They need to disclose any of the following: any conflicts of interest that disqualify you from participation, any information regarding ex parte contracts, contacts, any other information obtained prior to the hearing that would affect your ability to render a fair and impartial decision. Now, when you say ex parte contacts, does that mean if we've met with the owners or the developers?
Mayor, ex parte contacts would be contacts with individuals who have an interest in the project. That would include the owners, could also include opponents, and the key factor here is whether or not those individuals have supplied a member of the council with evidence that they intend to take into consideration tonight. All of the evidence that will be used in the hearing is required to be publicly disclosed, so if information has been received that a council member feels constitutes evidence that should be taken into consideration, we would like that disclosed.
Okay, I'll start. And I actually have met with the developers, and they gave me information, but it's the same information that I got for the, when they gave us to, again, for the council meeting tonight. So I'll go down the line, I guess. Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I was contacted by the developer, and I had, he was trying to address my concerns about the looks of the property and also the traffic impacts. I believe it's all here in what's being provided tonight.
Councilmember Campbell.
I did meet with the project applicant, but did not receive any information that is not included on the record.
Councilmember Coles.
I too, at the applicant's request, met with them to get an overview of their proposed project. I didn't receive any information. I mostly asked questions about traffic impact and appearance, but there was nothing other than just a presentation that we're receiving here tonight.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my colleagues, I also met with the applicant, and I don't feel that there's any information here tonight that I hadn't already been in discussion with when we had the meeting with the applicant. There were concerns that we already talked about, traffic design, et cetera. I did get a phone call from him, from the developer, and he left a message. I called him back, left a message, because I did meet with a community member for about an hour and a half, went out to the site and talked to a community member who was representing some other people in the area, and listened to what the concerns were. And I am the one who appealed it to the city council, in case you didn't know. So I didn't... I did that so that you would have the opportunity to be heard. I knew that there were some people that didn't get a notification sufficient for them. But I don't think there was any information I was given that I don't already have at hand.
Okay. Thank you all. And then after our staff report now, I need to ask if you have any questions of the staff.
I do not have any questions of staff, but there are some ideas and details that I wanted to talk with. to talk with the developer about, but I would like to hear, if possible, community comments first.
We're gonna do, after, we're gonna call on the applicant next after this, but I need to ask if you have any questions right now of the staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant. Anybody? No? Okay, in that case, we will call on the applicant, and he can do a presentation? I don't think you're on. Talk right into it.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, and Vista City Council members. I'm Chris Earl, I've met you all before, with Affirmed Housing, and I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of our proposed development, which we believe will benefit the local community and the city. We are the development partners with the listed applicant, Tim Winslow, the property owner. Affirmed Housing is the developer responsible for day-to-day management of those efforts. With us tonight, we have our architect, Jamie Stark, Stark Architecture, our planning consultant, Mike Howes with Howes Weiler, landscape architect, John Patterson with Gillespie Moody Patterson, our civil engineer, Tim Carroll with O'Day, and I think our traffic engineer, Sam Cab is here with Urban Systems, but I haven't seen him. We also have representatives from Solari Enterprises, who is a property management firm that has worked for us for 20 years and can speak to operations. After I'm done, which will be shortly, Tim Winslow, who's the property owner, will speak about the history of the property. I just want to say that it obviously appears there's a lot of interest in this particular parcel, and I understand. I also want to be clear before I go through the list of positive things that we are experienced developers, we're interested in being good stewards of the land, good neighbors, and members of the community. We work closely with city staff for over a year, that's since I've been involved, and Mr. Winslow worked with them longer than that. It is a conforming development to the recently approved 2012 General Plan 2030. We did go through community outreach efforts suggested by staff. We sought all parties that commented on the development, invited them to a presentation, listened to their concerns, and responded to the best of our ability. We believe, because we spent time on the street in South Santa Fe, that the community will provide an economic benefit to the city, contributing to balanced growth, and there's a few items. The development provides new residents to support existing commercial businesses. We met with over 25 businesses in proximity to the development, they were very supportive. There's gonna be 114 new households with a collective income of $6.5 million in the community. Property tax revenue, as stated in the staff report, generated, it'll be $40,000 a year to the city, and we will be paying over $2 million in development fees to proceed with the development and get building permits. We believe that, that this contributes to the City Council goals. We also, Affirmed is currently a partner with the city, and this will be our second effort. We're experienced developers, and we believe that the development is well-designed, contributes to balanced growth. John Conley, the Community Development Director, did an adequate job of presenting the development in the staff report, did a great job, but we would like to re, we would like to address any remaining concerns this evening for a swift approval of the development. And with that, I'd like to, I can answer any questions you might have for me specifically at Affirmed, the developer, or I can introduce Tim Winslow, the property owner, to speak.
Do you want to hear him first? Okay, we'll hear Tim first.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, where do I start? This has been a 12-year process to get to this point today, and I purchased the property from a group that wanted to build a tire center and a lube and tune on the property. And then we, when they didn't like that plan, I hired the best retail broker I could find. It just happened to be the same retail broker that the council used when the Costco project was developed. We struck out. We couldn't find any, any retailers to anchor this project. We had one group, Walmart, who came to the table, and we were at Esco with them for about 24 hours before they dropped us like a hot potato because they understood they had to do an EIR for the property. When all the retail options were exhausted, we began to work with the city, the community, and John Conley on the general plan update. We spent nearly two years on this process. There were endless community planning meetings, and we discussed retail, townhomes, low-density, high-density, mixed-use residential, and the general plan was adopted for the current use. Immediately upon the adoption of the general plan, we started the entitlement process. We've been two years in the entitlement process so far after the general plan, and we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get here. Everybody in the community has had the opportunity through the planning, through the general plan, through the planning meetings, to criticize the project, criticize the zoning, and criticize the general plan. The general plan was adopted. The Planning Commission has unanimously adopted this, accepted this proposal, and I ask you to also accept the proposal in accordance with the general plan. Any questions?
Any questions? We'll hold them until the end.
If I could answer any questions, if, any questions come along the way, it'd be appreciated.
Maybe after the speakers, then, they have questions.
All right. Thank you so very much.
So that brings us to then, to the speakers, unless, do you have any, is that all of your presentation? Do you have any more? Okay, okay. Then after that, we'll do, we have public testimony, and so we're going to do the speakers, and I have 31 speakers, so you each have three minutes. So I will start out, and we'll start calling them. Yeah, try, try not to repeat yourself, if you could, that would be helpful. Okay, we'll start with Richard Harris, followed by Brian Seymour. Richard. And he'll be, Brian Seymour will be followed by Sharon, looks like Sharon Seymour.
Can you hear me? My name is Richard Harris, I live at 1277 Cypress Drive. I guess I'm kind of the point house there in all this development. I live right across the street from that development on a hill there, and when you decide to make that a four-way outlet there, it's gonna follow us up getting out there. Now, are you going to change that left-turn lane only, right-turn lane only out of there? You know, if you, when you approve that project across the street from that, underneath my house, the three-story apartments will be looking down into my backyard and into my pool area. Won't that be fun? Yes or no?
We're just, we're listening to you.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm done. I'm against all the projects around my house, okay? And if you close that road off with a cul-de-sac, it's gonna make it even worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brian Seymour, followed by Sharon Seymour, and followed by Estee Kennington.
Good evening. My name is Brian Seymour, and I've lived at 1210 Cypress Drive for the past 35 years. First, I want to begin by thanking the council and the mayor for giving us this appeal and listening to our concerns about this project. I'm here this evening to ask you to please do not override the negative impacts that are gonna affect the community around the site. You shouldn't do it. I'm asking you to please just slow down and closely look at how it's gonna affect the citizens that live around this community that love Vista and want to improve Vista. The city's already approved other projects that are currently under the way. I'm suggesting let's take a look at those first, have those be done, and see what is the negative and the positive impacts of those that are already on slate. Let's look at what we can improve on to make it better for the ones that are gonna be built in there, instead of just massively approving multifamily apartments half a block farther down on South Santa Fe and approving so many of them that we don't know what the outcome will be. My primary concern is approving the project will change the community character of our city, and I'm not just talking about the people that live on Cypress or Mar Vista or Phillips, but just anybody driving down South Santa Fe now to have to go by and look at three-story apartment buildings. I'm not against developing the property. I myself have been a licensed contractor. I've been building houses in Vista for 30 years. I've been born and raised here, this is my hometown. My wife and I are both real estate agents, we understand doing projects and making money. We've done many projects throughout the city of Vista that have added beauty to the community as well as housing for people. I just feel that this project doesn't have the same values for this developer. He's building something that he's trying to get a profit written and make a great profit. We're not against developing it, I just think we should put something that's gonna add to the value of our community and the houses around there, as he's going into a lot of single-family dwelling homes, there should be something that is nice. I suggest that the county goes by the Shatter Ridge Mariner Apartments. I think that's a quality apartment building complex. If you go by there, you see how beautiful it is, the apartment rents, they're totally 100% booked out. I think this is something that we'd be willing to see there on that property. Like I say, we're not against the project development. The other thing that I'm concerned about is I use the bike lanes in the, in the city of Vista. There are very few, they get changed around. If we allow parking on the street there, you're forcing us to ride around cars, avoiding doors opening and riding into oncoming traffic in an already very busy street and a very busy intersection, and I think that's a safety concern that we should all look at. I also think that this project should be looking at green construction, solar panels.
Here's your wrap-up.
Yes. And so I'd like to see with green construction, solar panels, water conservation, and I'm just saying we should absolutely maybe wait and look at this and see all the safety issues before we continue going with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Sharon Seymour, I'm Brian's wife, and I live at 1210 Cypress Drive, and I asked to have this, this slide put up because you'll notice that they show a percentage of traffic going north, south, and up Mar Vista, but they show nothing about Cypress Drive, and so I know other people are gonna talk about other topics tonight, and I've chosen to talk about Cypress Drive in that area specifically between Santa Fe and Mar Vista. The approval of this apartment complex as it currently stands will absolutely have a negative safety impact on every person living on Cypress Drive in the area there. I am asking that you please listen to my explanation as to how this project impacts our street and not approve it without considering my proposed, our proposed solutions. I have a handout for you. There's one for each of you, if you could pass it down, that'd be awesome. I was wondering if you could look at the diagram and see the red area on this handout, and that's the Cypress Drive that I'm talking about. Also see that the only entrance to this proposed project is the blue circle, which lines up right where the arrow is on this diagram, which is right directly across from our street, Why is this a problem? Look at the curves on the Cypress Drive. If you could now drive it, you would see the lack of sightline from our driveways, the narrowness of the street. We cannot safely get out of our driveways as it is due to speeding cars. The road is narrow, and in order to even make the current curves, you have to actually slow down lower than the speed limit in order to not hit a car. Now is the time to fix this problem and not make it worse by adding hundreds of new drivers per day. People living, people living in these apartments will use Cypress Drive as a cut-through. I don't understand why it's not listed on the diagram. It's right there in front of them, and if you're not familiar with the area, I'll tell you where those people are gonna be going. They're gonna be going to the 15 freeway out Buena Creek, they're gonna be going to the library, to East Vista Way, to Fallbrook, to Bonzel. They could be taking kids to Monavista School, or the Community Clinic, or Ringel Terrace Park. They will use our street. Last Wednesday at 5:30, we counted traffic on Cypress Drive. In a 10-minute period of time, there was 46 cars that entered through Cypress Drive at this point here and exited on the other end and used it as a cut-through. That's in a 10-minute period of time on a Wednesday. You can drive down Santa Fe and take the alternate route that's on the diagram that I gave you, I think it's yellow, and go down Santa Fe and turn right on Monavista, and guess what? I've timed it, and it absolutely does not save any time to cut through Santa Fe, or through our street on Cypress Drive. In fact, the only way to save a second or two, tough time is to actually speed on a road, which has caused multiple accidents, turnover cars, and problems on our street. Please do not approve this development without addressing a solution to this current problem and not add more speeding cars to our street. So what is the solution? To me, the best solution is not putting a light there, because that's just gonna back up cars so people can't get out of their driveways. It's going to add more cars going through on our street. The solution...
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. The solution, which is what I wanted to get to, which, I guess I could stop and let my mom do it, 'cause she's the next speaker.
What it says, on your diagram, it says close, is that, are you wanting to close the street?
Uh huh, that's the solution.
Oh, you're asking to close the street?
Actually, would you mind if I just took my mom's time and she'd not speak? She's on the, she's delighted to finish it.
No, we can't, we can't do that, so we'll let her speak.
All right, Mom.
Is she Estee Kennington?
Yes.
Okay.
She's lived on Cypress for over 40 years, along with me and our whole family. We have three homes on this street, or four homes. I will. So what is the solution? The best solution is not...
A stoplight that will only add another backup of cars along the street, block residents from being able to get out of their driveways, and add additional speeding cars which this street cannot handle. The solution is to block off Cypress Drive at the end, possibly at the last house near Santa Fe that is marked with the sticky arrows as you can adjust it, and make the street a cul-de-sac with entrance from Monavista. I have polled a majority of the homeowners on this street, and had unanimous approval by everyone I've spoken to. This solution should be a requirement prior to approving this project. The solution will benefit, will have benefits to others as well. There is certainly, there's currently a bus stop at the corner of Cypress and Santa Fe. When the bus stops here, it is actually in front of the street blocking traffic flow. By blocking off Cypress, you now have this additional land that can be used to build a bus stop that would be used for those living in the apartments, install covered benches and a pull-off area for the bus stop. This area could also be an asset to the commercial lot on the corner for the ingress and egress. Trees could be planted that will beautify the area and an additional continuity to the landscaping of the apartment building across the street. The plan is simple, the request is reasonable, and is within your control to give, please make this condition, approval to this project, as it will help to migrate some of the safety and traffic concerns we the residents have as a result of this project. And just for myself, I'm completely against the project, I've lived here for 40 years. It's okay. Okay, we love Vista, and I hate having it changed by having this apartment house built. It really isn't attractive, it's going to back up on Vista, or Cypress Drive, and it's completely unsafe now for us to try to get to 78 on Mar Vista, and if you do this, how are we possibly going to get through to 78? I don't understand, you'll have to explain that to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Ralph, is it Yotan? Followed by Mike Buschimi, followed by Sarah Buschimi. So Ralph is first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I, actually, much of what I wanted to say has already been said by others, so I think I can make this pretty short. I do want to say I'm really kind of disappointed in, well, I mean, people have spoken to the fact that, you know, we were notified about all this, had a chance to speak before. I've lived here for 15 years at 1245 Cypress, and the, I've read two newspapers while there were two, and one ever since, and I read every word about South Santa Fe development, and always they talked of, you know, two-story buildings with shops down below, pleasant places to walk along, you know, with residences above and so on, and I thought, fine, do that, and all of a sudden, nobody ever, any of you guys, never, that I could see in the newspaper or by mailings ever let me know that what we really had in mind was a three-story, high, three-story, high-density, probably ugly building, you know, at the end of the street, which also, as people have pointed out, is gonna cause immense traffic problem. I'm on Cypress, I have a 20 mile an hour speed limit sign on my property and another one on my neighbor's property across the street. They speed by at all hours of the day and night at 40, 50 miles an hour, 'cause I happen to live in one place where it's, there's a straightaway there, and they can speed up and make up their time. and make up their time. And anyway, people were coming through there all the time, trying to get to the 78 freeway. You and I on Cypress Drive meeting Santa Fe, we butt right into the exit, the intersection to your project there. The, and people, as they've already been pointed out, a third of the people heading for the freeway turn left illegally, the rest of them go down and make an equally dangerous U-turn in front of the mortuary or down in there. And they also tangled, by the way, in the suicide lane there with the people trying to turn left into the Sunrise Cafe and that shopping center there. It's just a traffic, bad dream that you guys want to turn into a traffic nightmare. And I just really urge you guys to really minimally slow this down until the developer takes care of these problems at his expense, not the city's, and get some of this stuff straightened out before you do this to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are you Mike?
Yes, I'm Mike Buschimi.
Followed by Sarah, followed by John McCree.
Good evening, City Council. Me and my family lived on Cypress, 1215 Cypress, for 11 years, and no one has even spoken about crime, potential crime, and this, what this development could bring to this area. I wanted to call the attention, this slide in here, because this is the one that stuck out to me the most here. And as you can see in the yellow, these are all single-family homes that are decent, decent household incomes, mediums, well-to-do working families. Now, the proposal of these low-income apartments here, in the purple there, I just see us as being big targets for crime. There's been numerous studies that have shown that, that high-density, very low-income residences can, will promote crime in the area. And again, we've been broken into in our house, in our house twice in the last 11 years if we've been there. And my main concern, my chief concern, is the, not only the traffic, but the increase in crime to our street on Cypress as we, and even Philip, I just, I can't, this, this whole presentation has been so disheartening, just watching, I can't, the environmental report alone, just the couple slides that were presented with all the bullet points and the traffic concerns and everything, I just, I don't see how the zoning could have changed when it was originally commercial to residential. And I know developers talked about how they've had all these numerous meetings and whatnot to discuss this over the years and whatnot. How come I was never aware of this? I mean, you talk about a sign that's been posted on, right there, fronting Santa Fe, the sign is this big. I saw it today. It's tiny, the font is no bigger than 12-lettable. I mean, you're talking about lack of transparency here. Work with the community. So I'm pleading with you guys, save Mar Vista, please. I mean, you guys are custodians of our city and our neighborhoods. I mean, this, what we have here, what we have here is a suitability issue. I mean, I'm not against development. I know this place has been, have been vacant for, since we've been there. And it's okay to develop there, but develop something that's suitable, that's going to fit in with the neighborhood. This project, this proposal, does not fit the neighborhood. It's going to cause problems, it's going to cause unmitigated problems that are, that already exist today and are going to compound them. So I plead with you, please save Mar Vista, honor this appeal, take a step back to look and evaluate the neighborhood, and see what we're dealing with here and what this proposal could bring to us. That's all I have to say.
Sarah Buschimi, followed by John McCree, followed by Ray. It says Ray and Steve, is it Snetler, Snetler? Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah Buschimi, Mike's wife. I live on Cypress Drive, and, sorry, I'm just disheartened by this whole thing. The developer stated that, and I think to gain your sympathy, that he's spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get this far. Well, every single one of us in this room, and hundreds and thousands of others that live in this community, have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on their home. And not only that, but we're raising our families here. It's not just financial, which it is, it's our whole, and that's a lot of money, we're completely vested in this neighborhood, but we have to send our kids to these schools. And I've seen firsthand what's happened to the schools already, because a couple elementary schools have been closed. The two, one of them, which will be getting these other new students, received a lot of students from those schools. I saw a lot of students with, a lot of parents pulled their kids out of school, put them in private school, and the rating of Montevista went from a seven or an eight to a five within a year. Things are degrading, and we don't need to support that. We need to support the beauty of the neighborhood, because this is a very, it's a gem. If you drive through the neighborhood, you realize that it's a gem of Vista. And just the people, I've been there 10 years, I'm a newbie. These people have been here 30, 40, 50 years, and it's for a reason. This neighborhood is attracting people, residents who are shopping Vista, helping Vista. It would be detrimental to all Vista to lose these residents. And I know firsthand that we may reconsider living here if this goes through. I do like the idea of a cul-de-sac, if that's our only option, because it will protect us from some of the downfalls, but I'm really hoping ideally that it gets back to commercial, which it was originally intended for, in which the developer originally purchased the property. He originally purchased it knowing it was commercial, so I don't feel sorry. Sorry.
Hi, my name's John McCree, and I'm also a resident of Cypress Drive. I moved in in 2008 from Encinitas, and I kind of liked the space that I, extra space that I had compared to Encinitas, and started putting quite a bit of money into my house. Aside from that, my biggest concerns are the noise along South Santa Fe between Montevista and Mar Vista Drive. At about 5:30 in the morning, it starts and it gets pretty loud, up until about 8 or 9, loud enough to wake you up. I don't even need an alarm clock. So I'm very concerned about the noise level. I feel this three-story apartment unit, which it should only be two, maybe to make it look right, is going to increase the noise along that thoroughfare. And I'd also like to see requests that they block off Cypress Drive. I've seen stolen cars along the street, couches. The first week I moved in there, a car was driving so fast on the street, he ran into a telephone pole, knocked the power out for four hours. A guy rolled his car over in front of Mike and Sarah's house a few months ago. It's, it's a thoroughfare that needs to be closed off, and I'd like to, I'd like for you to consider that.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, just say, I know you're, you know, you're clapping for everybody, but just so you know, you've got 90 minutes of testimony still left, and so the more you clap, it's going to be a couple hours. But we're listening to both, we're listening to, well, we're listening, well, we're listening to both sides, and we're up here listening, you know, and so we appreciate both sides. So I don't know, you might, we just have a lot more speakers, so I just, we know, we know where you stand. I mean, we're hearing it, so, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ray Sinatoga. I'm not used to public speaking, so.
You can do it. It's okay.
This is very...
It's okay.
We live on Mar Vista. We left Carlsbad because of the crime and the traffic. I raised my children there, brought them here, because this was a better place. It is a gem. It is unknown by so many people, and they, and to bring some kind of development, they're like, can you read it? I can't read it.
First, I'd like to express my appreciation. My family, my family have been residents and watch our neighbors, as well as our work, ourselves, working to bring a value of all the homes in our area by remodeling, upgrading, and even the basic upkeep. Our concerns are already, have about the increase in traffic dangers just to get in and out of our driveway on Mar Vista.
I'm good. Okay. Sorry. Okay, we have concerns of, this is just exacerbating the problem that everybody already knows is there. You guys have done wonderful studies previously about the stop sign, the stoplight, the police have followed the traffic of people running stop signs.
On Mar Vista.
On Mar Vista, and the crossing streets, not just Avocado, but all around. And there is no resolution given to us. There are possibilities, but until there's resolutions for all the neighborhood and everyone, there should be no development at all. I am pro-development, I'm pro-growth. I think that everything in our neighborhood should show prosperity and good health for our environment. Put a park, put single-family homes, put things that are good to the community and that bring us together, not a dense environment that is so condensed. That's what happened to us in Carlsbad. They brought Calavera, they brought all these beautiful homes, well, guess what? They put these, these giant apartment complexes. Our cars got broken into three different times, mine twice. And it's, it's, it's not that you're bringing in a lower element. Make them like Bressi Ranch, where you have affordable housing for people who are good people but don't have a higher income, who want to buy that first house. I mean, there are so many options out there to make our community better, and we're not choosing that. We're letting a developer choose for us. And that bothers me as a community, as a resident. And they're not going to be here when this is over. As much as they say that they're stewards of our community, they're not, because they're going to be gone, and we'll be here dealing with the traffic, the accidents. We've had two cars flip over, and our neighbors hit the pole going down Mar Vista. You see that sign that says 25 miles an hour? You name me one person who goes 25 miles an hour, until they're at a stop. The point is, is that we need to look together for the right answers, and no one was informed. I don't care what they say. None of us were. I'm speaking for several neighbors who couldn't even be here, because they had to work. Thank you. Were you, Ray and Steve? Are you Ray and Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Mark Geip and Lilia Bowman, followed by Lilia Bowman, followed by Renee Gottsblau.
Hi, I'm Mark Geip. I live on Cypress Drive, 1284 Cypress. I've been there for nine years. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I wanted to bring out something. In 2005, I came to the Building Department as a representative of Carlo Development, also known as San Diego Self-Storage. They have a number of self-storage facilities throughout San Diego County, such as Carlsbad Self-Storage, Leavenheim Self-Storage, Encinita Self-Storage. And they wanted to buy that lot. They wanted to put a self-storage facility there. And anybody that knows their facilities knows that they build not low-quality self-storages, but high-quality self-storage units that actually beautify the neighborhoods in which they are located in. And I was told, Carlo Development was told, that the city of Vista did not want a self-storage facility there. Now, that would have developed that lot, would have brought income to the city of Vista, and it would have brought very insignificant traffic problems to the area, if any traffic problems whatsoever. I do not understand why the city would deny a self-storage facility in that lot, or something like that, but they would allow this, this facility, which is going to cause significant traffic problems, significant crime problems in this area. Makes no sense to me whatsoever. I have sat at the front of Cypress and at the far end of Cypress, where it goes on to Montevista. I've lived there for nine years, as I've said, and there are times when there are 200 cars that use that road as a thoroughfare. I had my son sit right there at South Santa Fe, and I have sat over at Montevista. People use that road as a thoroughfare. I have been robbed twice where I live, which is just, well, it's the first private street to the right as you enter Cypress from, from South Santa Fe. And what all the other folks have expressed here is that this is going to bring significant negative impact to our traffic and to, to future crime in this area. I think that the council needs to reconsider what is to be developed here. I do not think that they have put the proper, well, thought process into this project, for lack of a better word.
Thank you, sir. Lilia Bowman, followed by Renee Gottsblau, followed by James Daniel.
I'm thankful for your attention and allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Lilia Bowman, and I live at 1275 Cypress Drive. And I'm very concerned about the fact that a lot of what we're saying today may not be taken into account by those folks that don't live, commute, or partake in our community, and that will be allowed to damage this beautiful piece of land that has become my home for the past nine, one year and nine months. I lived in Vista and various other parts, and I moved to this area, this particular area of Cypress, because it was quiet, it's beautiful, and I love it. I personally have been involved in traffic jams that are daily occurrence while coming to or from work. I work in San Diego, and it doesn't matter what time of the day, the Mar Vista, Avocado, to Santa Fe jam is crazy. I can take from five minutes up to 20 minutes just to get from Mar Vista over the 78 to my home on Cypress. That's ridiculous, after spending about an hour coming from San Diego to, to the 78. As a volunteer with the Vista Sheriff's Department, I also hear and see how the crime has been escalating in this area, particularly in the past two years. What I fear the most is that if you bring in more folks into an already crowded area, the crime rate is going to skyrocket. As most of the folks here, I would like to welcome you to my home, so you can see what I see if these apartments were to be built, so you can feel the traffic jams, see the crimes being committed, and literally taste the air and the environment, and really think about how this is going to affect us. Most importantly, I respectfully request that you grant a continuance to this petition so that you can learn and get more precise information. I have no, what's the word I want to say, information as to how to use this land, but I do love this place, and I really would wish that you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're actually, one of our council members needs a break, so we're going to take a five-minute break. break. If everybody will take your seats, we'll get back to our, we'll go back to our meeting. Hello, everyone. Do I have my speakers? Okay. We need to have your attention, please. Renee Glatzblau, followed by James Daniel, followed by Barbara Harris. We're just, we're a third of the way through our speakers.
Good evening, Mayor, Ritter, City Council Members, City Attorney and Clerks and Staff. Our Vista residents, students, cyclists, motorcyclists, cars, pedestrians need to be safe. I'm looking for you to deny PC 14299, South Santa Fe Apartment Vista. This project will not be a safe project for the youth living there or the community at large, as there is a danger of child predators coming into the area and criminal activities also. As you know, that does happen when we had John Gardner III coming in with Amber Dubois and Chelsea King right after he left sober living in Vista. So please, I came across Quail Creek Apartments, a very well-kept apartment community. It's 55 and older senior apartment. That could be just the right answer. There's a pool, tennis court, a dining area, and breakfast bar. Kitchens are fully equipped. Spacious one and two bedrooms upstairs and downstairs, clubhouse, a gated community, laundry facility, smoke-free community, parking is on the site. This complex was an ex-squandered crime-free multi-housing program. Rents are due monthly, and there is apartment manager on site. They are good units to see as before you sign and start construction on any project. Of course, we hope you deny this one. Please do the right thing for the safety of our Vista residents as they deserve the very best to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. James Daniel, followed by Barbara Harris, followed by Nancy Gosnell.
Good evening. Can you put up that picture of the yellow and stuff? I'd like the council to take a look at, no, the one with the yellow and the purple. He'll find it.
That one?
Okay. If the council takes a look at that picture and look at everything in the yellow, that's all single-family homes. It's a community. This apartment's not part of this community. You have in this apartment 114 units, I believe, and some of them are two-bedroom, three-bedroom. They say that families are going to live here. Well, that's not always true because you get multiple people living in these apartments. Now, you have parking spaces for 200 and some odd cars, but if you get more adults living in these apartments, you have more cars. Where are they going to park? On the street or anywhere else that they can. The schools, have you looked at the classroom sizes in the schools? And the school closest that's going to supply these apartments with the children that's going to live there? Our schools are overcrowded now, and we're just making them more overcrowded with this. I don't understand why Vista needs more apartments, and especially in a community of single-family homes. Now, I live on Mar Vista, and I'll give you an example. There's all single-family homes, except one home was rented out. The person that lived there before kept the property very nice all the time, but she wanted to go ahead and rent it out. It's a single-family home with a small rental in the back of it. There's five families living in that home now. There is, I counted, 11 cars parked on the street and on the property. And it's a pigsty. They don't care. They're renters. We have a beautiful community here. When you sit there and you start getting a bunch of people renting, they don't care. The other day, I was just standing outside my house. A guy drove up, doesn't even rent the place, threw a beer can out the window, and then drove into the property. This is what's going to happen with apartments. You talk about the traffic, and you've heard a lot about the traffic and stuff. Believe me, the traffic's going to get worse. And then how much taxpayer money is going to be used to sit there and redo the roads?
Let me wrap up.
Okay. Basically, it's all about money. I know that developers have deep pockets, they want to make money. I hope the council disagrees with them.
Barbara Harris, followed by Nancy Gosnell, followed by George Apostnean.
Hi, thanks for letting us speak tonight. My name is Barbara Harris. I live at 1277 Cypress Drive. I've lived there since 2007. Before that, my parents lived there since 1987. We love it there. I was a little taken aback by his comment, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, that he was going to make it so that the new apartment dwellers could come out of the driveway and turn both left and right. But those of us who live on the other side of Santa Fe won't be able to do that, I guess because we're old, established people, and I don't know, it's different. Anyway, turning left from Mar Vista and then turning left into that new apartment site is going to back up traffic even more on Mar Vista. And the people that made the left turn onto South Santa Fe from Mar Vista in the left-turn lane there are going to say, oh, I don't want to be behind these people that are turning left into this apartment, so I'm going to get over one lane. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see that car. It's just going to increase traffic. They quote improvements on Santa Fe between Montgomery and York made it so easy for first responders, they can't even get to the other side of the street without going down and making a, I would call it more of a K-turn because it can't be like a U-turn. The trucks are too big. There's going to be parking on the street on both sides now, and that means because of the curve of the street, people pulling out of the driveways on South Santa Fe aren't going to be able to see the cars coming at probably 65 miles an hour. I know you probably don't think that's right, but there's over a mile between the stop sign at York or just about a mile between the stop sign at York and the stop sign at Mar Vista. So when those people do not have to stop at Mar Vista, by the time they hit Montevista, they're usually doing about 60 miles an hour. It's hard to avoid them. You can't see them. And one more thing I would like to bring up. Every day I read the paper and I listen to the news, and there's always something about the governor telling us about the drought. We've got to save water. So I know, let's build another unit where 114 units can be put in, all of them using water. It doesn't make much sense to me. Does it to you? I would invite all of you to come to my house. I'm the first house on the corner on Cypress Drive.
I need you to wrap up if you could.
I would like to. I would like to wrap up with you guys voting for a continuance to really check this out. Come visit me at my house. Come look and see what I see.
Nancy, followed by George Apostnean, I think it is, and by Wendyce Apostnean.
I'm giving you each an envelope of pictures that I sat out of the corner of Phillips and Mar Vista one morning and took pictures of the traffic because I don't think you could even understand it unless you tried to get out. There's not been a lot of discussion about Phillips and Mar Vista. I don't even think anybody has addressed it, but I live on Phillips, and it's almost impossible to get out of Mar Vista anymore right now. And I'm so confused. I've heard so much. But I have been in Vista since 1966. I've been in my house for 34 years on Phillips Street. I have three generations, myself, my children, my grandchildren, going through Vista schools. I'm not a newcomer. I'm vested in this community. I would like to know how many of you have been out to the site. Okay, everybody's been out there, so you know exactly what we're talking about. I sent, I don't want to repeat myself. I sent in a petition. I highlighted an area of what 114 homes would look like in our area to show you how much property right now it takes to house that amount of people. And this was way back. So I hope you got all that. I hope you read it. I hope you took it into account. I hope you've read the EIR because by your own standards or by Vista's standards, an LOS of D or better, level of service for traffic, is acceptable. And in the EIR report on page 4.5-3, it says, "South Santa Fe Avenue to Avocado and Avocado to Southwest, or State Route 78 Westbound ramps, both qualify as an F LOS." So it's already below the standards set by Vista, and you're looking to add more traffic? And I sympathize with the developer. I understand, you know, he wants to make money. But I did hear somebody say, you know, "We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for our homes, and we would like to keep our neighborhood a single-family residence." I went over to Costco today, and I went the back way because I know there's an apartment complex over by the courthouse, 221 units. There's more being built on South Santa Fe, more being proposed, or North Santa Fe, more being proposed for South Santa Fe. Where are all these people coming? And do we really want all these people in Vista? I mean, I moved down in 1966 from LA, and we don't need all these apartments. I mean, it's crazy. And again, you know, I'm a master gardener for the county of San Diego, and all we hear is sustainable landscape and drought and water, and where are these people getting their water and energy? I can go on. The only thing I can suggest, put in a senior citizen housing apartment complex there. Give them someplace other than mobile homes and assisted living to live. Or put in a sheriff's substation. We need that also.
George, followed by Wendyce, followed by Gary Walker.
Hi, my name is Georgia Potian, 30 years at 1324 Cypress Drive. After reading the entire EIR and the Vista 2013 through 2020 general plan for housing elements, I have some questions. The general plan states that 1,374 units need to be built by 2020 in the city. Confirmed by the plan, the numbers for all five demographic target income levels will be more than achieved without this proposed project. Additionally stated in the plan is that multi-unit apartments out of the revitalization area are to be maximum two stories, high unless needed by low housing needs. As stated in Table 35 of the Citywide Residential Development Standards Plan, since this is not the case, why are these guidelines being overridden and ignored? The Citywide Residential Development Plan goes as far as to say, and I quote, "Two-story garden-style buildings in residential neighborhoods retain character. We must, as a community, maintain or better yet enhance the quality and character of our neighborhood, not add to a burden to an aesthetically challenged corner. Another concern is creosote, which is a carcinogen, hazard waste that was stored on this property during construction of city works in the past. Where is the report of cleanup tests to assure that toxins are no longer present or future residents or will become airborne when the ground is disrupted? We want tests done before this project is approved. A question that urgently needs to be addressed, what is our climate action plan in Vista? Should we insist on green construction, including but not limited to solar panels and car-charging stations? Isn't this included in future buildings being planned? As a part of the CAP in general housing planned for 2010 through 2020, the city says it's committed to ensuring that new development complies with energy efficiency and green building standards, as in Title 24, the California Code of Regulations to Lower Energy Costs. Is Title 24 being considered at all in this proposed bill out? On June 1st, USA Today identified California as the number-one state running out of water, experienced the worst severe drought conditions in the nation. This is a concern for each and every one of us as to be addressed now, not later. Short-term plans seem to only be driven by short-term profits. Finally, and most importantly, it's not the public's best interest to override the EIR that unequivocally states that there is no mitigation for the severe negative impact that will result regarding the traffic and therefore safety of these proposed projects. Other cities demand that before occupancy, all the traffic issues associated with projects be resolved. Why isn't the safety of the Mar Vista, Avocado, Phillips, and Cypress residents worthy of your consideration? The next best solution is not to shrug our shoulders and say that this plan is the least objectionable choice. This shows blatant preference to all associated with the development. In closing, our community respectfully requests a postponement of this project in order to have adequate time to challenge the EIR for safety, allow for changes in housing density, architectural design upgrades, and to receive a current hazard waste report. Thank you for your time.
Wendyce, followed by Gary Walker, followed by Dan- Wendy Sopashian, followed by Gary Walker, followed by Don Looney.
Hello, my name is Wendy Sopashian, and for 31 years I've lived at 1324 Cypress Drive. And I really appreciate the extra communication that was made for us tonight, because these are my neighbors. First and foremost, after reviewing the EIR regarding traffic, I can't believe the city would move forward with this. The plans for two additional apartment complexes on this half-block will collectively have a severe negative impact of traffic and safety on Mar Vista and must be viewed collectively. The concerns of these homeowners that reside here are not being heard. It appears the desires of the owner, builder, and developer that do not live in our city transcends ours. We, however, will be looking down on these unattractive rooftops, driving past these densely populated compounds, and impacted by the traffic and safety every single day. Our community character must be protected. Since I don't feel our concerns have been seriously addressed, I've been driving around Vista, including Shatter Ridge, pondering the best way to deal with this proposal. And a couple things stood out for me. First, except for hotels and a few commercial complexes, there are very few three-story rental developments in the city. Second, in Shatter Ridge, there's a design continuity, with all single and multifamily residential units downhill, having peaked tile roofs enclosing all utilities, which is a very considerate neighbor design. For instance, the Monarch in Shatter Ridge is 314-unit market rate complex that is very attractive. Even though it's up against the freeway, they rent from $1,470 to $2,600 a month and have 100% occupancy. They're two-story, Spanish Mediterranean, with columned arches, window lintels, exposed rock walls, chimneys granite, and stainless kitchens, and fully pitched tile roofs. They're appealing to homes above. They also have a wonderful curb appeal due to the landscaping. So why is a design like this, that's required in Shatter Ridge, not demanded on this side of the freeway? If all the open space we have that's left is to be removed and views of many homes diminished, why would a residential proposal with a flat roof and ugly screened rooftop utilities even be considered? On page 255 of this appeal, it says that the three-story building is compatible with surrounding land use and existing development. This is a falsehood. After viewing the renderings of this proposal, it looks like a cheap comfort inn to me, built with minimum setbacks. There is no true rendering of the train wall and the homes above. It shows sky to the horizon, suggesting a view that doesn't exist. This project creates no design continuity with its surroundings. We don't have California Contemporary at all on this block, so how can it blend in? The Sunrise Cafe has rock and tile, and so does Chicago Title. Why not unify this block? Nearly all the buildings on this block have tile roofs or treatments. Street design curb appeal and continuity is desired, or we won't get the upscale neighborhood appearance that is favored by all residents. Let's retain the residents that are here. We are the socio-economic demographic that shop Vista and crave more opportunities to do so, with quality stores and restaurants. If you are applying the "I will build it and they will come" mentality, let's make sure who's arriving.
I need you to wrap up, please.
I am adamantly requesting that you postpone your approval until all council members can come witness the site from our backyard perspectives and envision the change that we will be subjected to. In addition, please come experience the peak evening time at Mar Vista, Avocado, Santa Fe, Cypress intersections, and the freeway at Mar Vista Exchange. Thank you all so, so much for considering this appeal and addressing our concerns with responsible civic action.
Gary Walker, followed by Don Looney, followed by Chris Earl.
Good evening. I live at 1428 Steen Circle, that's just right off of Phillips, up a nice little private, beautiful little cul-de-sac with some nice homes up there. I go to work every morning between 7:30 and 8, and so does my wife, and at this point in time in the morning, it is a literal nightmare to get off of Phillips on Mar Vista, up to Avocado, and up to Phillips. No one has stressed how critical it is on Mar Vista, how tight it is, and how winding it is, and how unmitigatable it is, and that point was brought up. There's people that walk that road a lot, and I swear, I pray for them, because there's approximately 18 inches of space between the cars flying by and where people have to walk. There's properties that come down, that are steep hills that hit right to the road, and it is an 18-inch path that you have to walk on, and it's tremendously dangerous. Now you add 200 more cars to the mix, you're just, it's a recipe for disaster. And you can't, there's nothing you can do to straighten out, you can't fix Mar Vista. I mean, you said it was unmitigatable, you'd have to buy out so many properties, it would be cost prohibitive, so you're, you're, it's just going to fail. It's going to create what's failing now, and taking something that's bad at current and make it just 100 times worse. There's been a lot of people that have made a lot of great points here tonight. There has to be an alternative use for that property that won't incorporate that much traffic, that much potential for crime, and, and just, and just the fact that it is a single-family neighborhood, the whole place, and everybody has their lives vested in their homes there, and they want to keep that. So, I just, I would hate to see it go down as it is. I mean, I understand developers have to make money, I get it, it's his land, he needs to do something with it, but there has to be a smarter plan. Thank you.
Don will actually be followed by Marilyn Derrickson, and followed by Rick Cronenbush.
I'm Don Looney, I reside on Phillips Street, and I certainly don't envy your position. There's been a lot of ideas, a lot of comments, a lot of suggestions that have been voiced here tonight. And, I know from experience that you've got a great planner, you've got a great staff with engineering and with planning. And Mr. Coles, you had made a comment that you were appreciative of Mr. Conley's efforts in fulfilling the goals and objectives of council. With the ideas and the comments that have been voiced tonight, I would encourage council to ask for a continuance for these ideas to be discussed with planning and within engineering, to see what other options might be available before council makes a decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Marilyn Derrickson, is she here? Followed by Rick Cronenbush.
Good evening, thank you. I do live in the area, I am on the opposite side of this particular site, and I do own my home. I'm very blessed, because my grandchildren probably never will be able to buy a home. And, I think apartments, I'd much rather see than the fields of weeds that we're seeing all the way down South Santa Fe and the dilapidated businesses that are there. So, I think the consensus that it will bring crime and noise is, we don't know that, I mean, that's all over. That's life, as sad as it may seem. But I think that apartments are the new way that our kids are living. It's very difficult for them to buy a new home, and I'm in the industry with new homes, and in all of the areas of Southern California, apartment living is very popular. It's an affordable way for young adults, not necessarily with a bunch of kids, or not necessarily multifamily, people living in a single place. It's an affordable way to live. It's a beautiful city, Vista is beautiful, and it is important for us to keep it that way, but we can't assume that it's going to bring all of the trash and the crime, and traffic is already here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Rick Cronenbush, followed by Dan Milich, followed by Kelly, Kelly Kelly.
Mayor, council members, I'm here this afternoon to speak in support of Case 299. My name is Rick Cronenbush, I live at 2069 Oak Glen Drive. I moved here from out of state to Vista 24 and a half years ago. At that time, there was a relative living here, so that's how I ended up in Vista. The plan was to live here temporarily while looking for a permanent home. Well, we couldn't find anything that compared to what Vista had to offer. With the high cost of housing in the area, I believe that every opportunity should be available for Vista to acquire new residents. This project will definitely attract new residents looking for high-quality rentals. I'm a general contractor specializing in residential construction. Since I live on the south side of 78, I use Mar Vista very often. I'm always going to Gebe Lumber, El Camino Rental, Sunrise Materials, and the AMPM. Mar Vista is a quaint little street that hasn't changed much over the years that I've been here. The traffic has not changed much compared to the growth around it. Even in the traffic, the peak traffic areas, it may be bumper-to-bumper, but it's always moving, or else I wouldn't be taking it. The traffic's really predictable, I know when the slower times are going to be, and I know that all the regulars know how long it takes to get to and from 78. For years, it's always been about three to six minutes. When I first heard about this project, I thought, "Oh, no, there goes my back road to Santa Fe." So I looked at the studies and spent some time going over the scenarios, and I looked at other multi-unit projects, like the one that was talked about in Shatter Ridge. As the new project rents out, the users of Mar Vista will have plenty of time to adapt to the increased traffic. In my mind, the reality is this. I think that...
Please be respectful.
I think that the increase is going to be really, really gradual, and as most multifamily projects, when they're full, usually the car count is not correct compared to the traffic studies. I think they always go for the maximum usage. Mar Vista is just one of the several routes that's available for this project. In reality, I'd be surprised if there's any noticeable increase in traffic. Everyone knows that when a traffic route clogs up, that you adjust for that, and you either keep using that route or usually find a faster route. So in the end, I think the traffic kind of evens out and it goes back to just a nice, normal flow.
I need you to wrap up, sir.
Being in construction, I'm all for new construction in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dan Milich, followed by Kelly Kelly, followed by Mary Jabe.
Mayor, council members, staff, and public here this evening. My name is Dan Milich, I live at 1875 Jardine Court here in Vista. My wife and I moved to the Shatter Ridge area in 2008, but we've lived in North San Diego County since approximately 1989, moving here from Eastern Washington in 1986. I'm here tonight to support this development, and to urge you to support staff's recommendation and the prior planning commission approval of the project. This development is proposed in a manner that is consistent with the city's adopted general plan, the recently adopted general plan that we've talked about quite a bit here this evening. It's also compliant with the development standards per the city zoning code. My background is city planning and private development planning, a former city planner at City of Oceanside for 11 years, and in Eastern Washington for over three years, and about 20 years of private development work. So, what I'm here to say is that, when you have a site that you recently general planned for this use, there's been a number of studies that have been completed to analyze the impacts of the uses that could be allowed on this property. High-density standalone residential is one of those uses. It's permitted by right in this zone and within this land use designation of the general plan. It's an important consideration, because study has been done on that, the impacts have been looked at. The EIR was done for the general plan 2030. The city has provided a mixed-use designation for the site and its mixed-use under the zoning and development code. This mixed-use designation permits, anticipates, and anticipates the potential for higher residential density multifamily developments. In other words, this is where the city has determined that higher intensity development should occur. In conclusion, the proposed project represents a quality multifamily residential development to be developed by a longtime, well-respected, and local development company. I encourage you to uphold the staff recommendation and the prior planning commission action on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Kelly, followed by Mary Jabe, followed by Christina. Gino?
Hi, my name is Kelly Kelly, and my husband and I have resided on Phillips Street and Philmar Lane for the last 21 years. And I was one of the people that just found out about this, so I don't have little diagrams and everything to show you. We live on Phillips and Philmar Lane, it goes from Mar Vista over to Phillips. So it's a privately-owned street, I mean, we have to maintain it, it's private, and so people are already going over it during those peak hours, it's just one after another, it's very small. And, we know that this is only going to increase if we have more people on that street. Everyone who's wanting to get over to Phillips Street will be taking this. Traffic is already horrendous. Just the other night, it was Friday night at 11 o'clock, we heard skidding of wheels and a big bang, and a car was going too fast and hit a wall. I mean, that happens all the time. So the more people, the more accidents. I'm also concerned about the children that will be down there. We have limited sidewalks, that's dangerous, and again, traffic is horrendous. It backs up, and I think before you can, you know, before you go forward, we need to resolve the existing traffic issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, followed by Christina, it's like Gino, followed by Sharla Snow.
Good evening, thank you for, Mayor and Council for considering this appeal. Had I had more time, I would have put something more eloquently together, but because of the death of a brother last week, I would prefer not to be here and have to address this issue. I have lived on Phillips Street for almost 40 years, and have dealt with the traffic issues therein for almost 40 years. I've seen the traffic from Mar Vista and Phillips, and have addressed that and have dealt with it, and as well as the traffic coming from Civic Center Drive now up to Phillips. I was noting and reading the agenda and the mitigation information in EIR report on your website, it says that they used, this is very interesting, it says they used a guide, used the guide from a final draft made in year 2000? Hmm, "Year 2000 to establish the Santa Fe Vista Apartments Traffic Impact Analysis Study Area." I'm sorry, that's year 2000, that's 14 years ago, to make this issue, this traffic, what is it, what is it? It's Traffic Impact Analysis, that's 14 years ago, they're using information. Is that relevant? It says that Phillips Street is not designated as a circulation element roadway. It is designated as a two-lane local residential street that is not considered to carry through traffic. That'll be interesting, when, last city council meeting that we were here, it says that over 300, it says 340 people will live down in the 114-unit, and it says roughly 684 more trap cars will commute from that corner up to Mar Vista exit. So if they can't get there off of Mar Vista, where will they go? They will go down to Civic Center Drive, and then will come up Phillips Street. Phillips has no sidewalks. It is covered, it is plastered with dog walkers, people that have children that use skateboards, and there are children always on that roadway with speeding traffic. Just wait until you get sued by people that have a loved one that's been killed. There are no sidewalks. It's a dangerous area. On the website, it says that the SandTAC IET guidelines also recommend it include roadway segments and the intersection in the traffic impact study area where a proposed project would include 50 or more peak hour trips in either direction. It says that the proposed project is anticipated to add a maximum of only 13 a.m. and 13 peak hour trips on Mar Vista. 13! 13, it says, 13 a.m. and 13 peak hour trips on Mar Vista on this section from Avocado through the Phillips Street intersection to South Santa Fe. 13! How many of you, 13?
Ma'am, I need you to wrap up here.
It says, "As a result of the above consideration, the Mar Vista..." It says, as a result of the above consideration, the Mar Vista Drive Phillips Street intersection was not analyzed in the TIA Traffic Impact Assessment. The Mar Vista Drive Phillips Street was not, it was not addressed, it says. It was not analyzed in this.
Your time is up.
Thank you. I hope you completely reconsider and at least delay this project. It will be horrendous, and you will have to deal with issues of safety and crime. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Christina Gino. I was born in Vista. I have moved around quite a bit in the county, and five and a half years ago, when my family decided that we wanted to buy a house, I knew exactly where I wanted to buy. I wanted to come back home to Vista. So we looked around at probably over 100 homes, and Mar Vista had this little gem. It was beautiful and perfect, and even though there were no sidewalks, and I had no idea about the current traffic issues, it was perfect for us, so we bought it. I can deal with the traffic as it is, even though it's incredibly dangerous. I would never let my kids walk on that road. The traffic has gotten so bad, though, that even if it's not bumper to bumper, which is when people are actually going slow, people are driving at 40 miles an hour, and you cannot turn out easily or safely from your driveway. So I have an issue with you adding, it says 205 cars, but let's face it, family and friends are going to come over. I don't agree with the fact that 30% is going to come out through Mar Vista when that's your easiest access to the 78, which is the main freeway. Most of the people who are going to reside in these apartments are going to be entering and exiting through that road. There is no stoplight, which it doesn't really need as long as people obey traffic, but the bigger problem is okaying a development there when there's already an issue on the road. I would love to see the city address the issue before moving forward with the project because all you're going to be doing is creating an even bigger issue that those of us who have been living there have been dealing with for a number of years. On top of it, I just want to make a statement that I was never notified about this. I did not notice the teeny tiny sign on the big lot of empty land. I heard from a neighbor yesterday, and I spoke to a couple of neighbors today about it, and they had no idea either. I think it was a disservice to those of us who live on that road to not notify everybody all the way up to the freeway because all of us will be impacted, all of us. To stick to the status quo and only notify the people within 500 yards or 500 feet or whatever might have been enough for you guys to obey the law, but it certainly was not enough for those of us because I guarantee you would have had every single person who resides on Mar Vista here tonight. You would have had another two hours of people speaking out. You would have had a lot more objections than what you just see here. So I have to say, please stop what you're doing, address the issues that are at hand already, and then move forward. With developing, we're all for developing, just not this way.
Thank you. Charlotte Snow, followed by Chris Muse, followed by Brett Schatzenbach. She's not here? Okay, then Chris Muse, followed by Brett Schatzenbach, followed by Shelton Kennington.
Good evening and thank you, mayor and council member and staff for letting me speak. My name is Chris Muse, and I own Alpha Bicycle Company right down the street, and I live on the other side of the freeway, so I do go down Mar Vista. My concern for Vista is it is a highly rated family to live in and top-rated in the country. I read at times, but I don't think this kind of a development is going to help those ratings. My concern is more for the residents of this proposed location at a main and busy street because they'll also be, well, it is almost one of a speedway as it is, and these are family members, and the other side is the Sprinter. They'll be wedged in between it. The Sprinter is blowing its whistle four times in an hour from 4:30 in the morning to 10:30 at night, and the train does rumble and make noises as well. So they're going to live in a constant noise factory plus pollution from the cars and whatever else. I would like to think it, I do not like to think it would end up, I will not, I do not believe it will end up being a high-rent unit apartment. It'll be a low-income, nobody wants to live there in place, but has to because they can only afford it. If I get a little bit of business from the expense of lowering the standard of living in Vista, I'd rather not. It would add to the foot traffic that was trying to get up Mar Vista likely and bicyclists, which is definitely needs to be addressed because that road is dangerous to foot traffic and bicyclist. And that's it.
Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Brett Schatzenbach. I'm the CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak on behalf of the chamber. Apologize for being dressed down a little bit. I took the day off to attend kindergarten graduation today, but duty calls. So I'm here to support the developer and the project, and specifically to support staff's recommendation. As was said a little bit earlier, a lot of time and effort was put in by the city and the staff to develop the general plan update and the specific zoning that went into that site, and all the sites in Vista, but we're here, of course, about one site. And this development fits within the zoning requirements, fits within the parameters set in place by the city. And so to deny a project like this, to flat-out deny it, would be like telling the property owner, it's fine to own this piece of dirt as long as you keep it dirt. You know, you can't bring a development if, within these parameters, because you're going to have impacts. Well, the city has already set out what kind of developments are acceptable. This is a high-quality project that meets those guidelines. So we would urge you to vote in favor of the development, specifically with the recommendations of the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Kennington, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
I don't think that you have followed all the instructions by the city. If you listen to Mr. Posen, there's a lot of things that weren't done, that haven't been done. The people who've gotten up here in favor, but it's almost been embarrassing.
Sir, could you dress us?
I'm looking for somebody. First time, I'm on the Sixth House on Cypress. Sixth House is from Santa Fe. I got no notice of it. The first time I got notice was from the developer, talking to him on the phone about a piece of property that we have for sale or wanted to sell. No, nothing personal. We've been here on that hill since 1974, as my sister said. Development is bound to happen, but it should be done with the elected officials looking out for our welfare, for the best interest of the residents of our wonderful city. New developments don't get the upper hand in our community regardless of the economy and/or how much money they have. The 114 units will be here for the duration of my grandchildren's lives, and we're going to have to look at that. They're going to have to look at it, and it's, if you compare this to the Monarch, it's not even close in quality, but the previous councils that put together Shadow Ridge did a wonderful job. That's a wonderful community. Traffic is one of the biggest concerns for everyone from Alta Vista, Cypress, to Mar Vista. I've lived on each of the streets. I've lived on Fillmore, Phillips, and Cypress. The bottom of Cypress has the cones, you can only turn right, and not too long ago, you put cones at AMPM, so you can only turn one direction. Why is it okay for this project to be able to go both directions when you have examples right in front of you that it's not safe to turn across the traffic? I've heard accidents at AMPM from my house of cars being T-boned and critically injured people. That's eventually why they put those cones there at AMPM. Parking on the street, right now, it says two-hour parking. How is that going to change? Has anybody considered that? I checked the traffic study for Laurel Creek. The project approved a few weeks ago when we were here. The project consists of 71 units, and they projected eight trips per day on their project site. Depending which number you use that was put together by this developer or whoever did it, 5.6 cars per day. It's a bit of a difference. It's 200 cars a day difference. So I don't think the number, I think the numbers are skewed. I got other information on other, this was the lowest amount of cars per unit that I've seen of the city when I was here today.
I need you to wrap up, sir.
Okay, that's what that sound was for. If anybody has any questions about what this high density is going to look at, just drive down Postal Way. The cars are parked there all the time. They don't move. You try to get by and not hit the car coming at you. It's very dangerous. In Santa Fe, it's going to be going a lot faster.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, mayor, council, and thank you, Councilman Rigby, for appealing this. I would like to remind Councilman Rigby that last week, or last council meeting, you and others on the council pointed out the safety issues of the stop sign on Shadow Ridge Drive, and that was a driving concern for continuing to keep that sign against those that wanted it removed. Several people have talked about safety concerns here on Mar Vista and other areas in this community, and that's worthy of at least a delay to make sure that that is addressed adequately. Vista, being the climactic wonderland that we all love and enjoy being here for, as well as the topography, is really a gem, as several have mentioned. This area of Vista, I think, is the premier gem. When you think of the beauty of Vista, you think of this, large lots, windy roads, beautiful homes. You just got to love it. It's not suburbia. You can go to Carlsbad or Shadow Ridge and see suburbia, and there's a need for that, and we appreciate that. But it doesn't stand up to the beauty of this area here. Putting a high-density apartment complex in here without at least bringing the architecture standards up or some other way to make that blend into this beautiful community, I think, would be a travesty. The, several people have made comment on the public notice, and I realize that the city follows all the rules to make this happen, but the technologies are out there to make this a much better process. We have to do a better job reaching out to all of the community that is affected by this development, and the 500-foot notice just is not cutting it. And basically, I've talked with Mr. Conley several times and my good friend Dave Nielsen, a civil engineer, and essentially what has happened over the years is that Vista has painted themselves into a corner in this area. It's not your fault, and perhaps it's not even the previous council's fault, but over the years, we've got to the point where we've created such a traffic and safety issue here that anything we do is going to cost us a lot of money or just going to make it a lot worse. So what do you do? Well, you have to step back and figure out. You can't just walk across that wet paint and walk across that beautiful carpet and just destroy the whole area. You have to step back and figure out what's the way to fix this, and if it costs $2 million or $15 million, maybe we step back and put that solution in place before we put something else that makes it worse. Thank you.
Okay, that is all of our public speakers, and now the applicant can come up and do rebuttal testimony. I have actually two of their speakers listed. I have Tim Winslow's again, and I also have Chris Earl. I don't know if either of you want to speak. I have, you know, I didn't take you as speakers because I knew that you were going to speak here.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to discuss community concerns. Do I have three minutes or...
If you have need longer, it's okay.
Okay. So it appears that the key issues are much the same that were addressed at the Planning Commission. That's traffic, architecture, rental and property management, and other alternative, other uses, the density, and I heard a little bit about green building. So Sam Cab with Urban Systems is our traffic engineer. He worked on the EIR also, and he can speak, but I do have a couple of key points that I'd like to mention. One is, is that when I came here this evening, I went through the Mar Vista-Avocado intersection. I came from Poway area at 10 after 5. My car continued to move. I did not have to come do a full stop until I hit the stop bar at the intersection. There were three cars in front of me. I don't know what it's like all the time. I don't profess to know that because I don't live in that neighborhood, but I did notice that, that particular item. On the traffic, we've already shown that the, per the traffic report, that directional distribution percentage of 45% would go north on South Santa Fe, 25% south on South Santa Fe, past Mar Vista Drive, and 30% of the traffic from our community would go up Mar Vista Drive. 20% of that is to go to 78, 10% goes, continues on to Mar Vista Drive on the other side. At, and by the way, existing level of service at Mar Vista and Avocado during the peak hours, right now during the AM, the delay is without, without the project is 32 and a half seconds, a level of service D. Delay with the project adds 3.2 seconds in the morning to a level of service E. That's actually 3.1 seconds. That's four cars inbound in the morning and 14 cars outbound. And I can have Sam come up after I'm done to defend his report and information. During the PM, the delay without the project is 57.3 seconds, level of service F currently. Delay with the project is 62.8 seconds, level of service F. It adds five and a half seconds, 13 cars inbound in the PM, and six cars outbound. As to Cypress, and I understand, because there's been a large representation from the neighbors in Cypress, I understand that that's a cut-through area, has been traditionally and might even be worse from Alta Vista to Alta Vista, but per our traffic engineer, less than 1% of our development's traffic will travel Cypress. That's why it showed up, did not show up on the initial distributions. As to the median studies, we're happy to build a median, and we want to make sure that people are safe. We want to make sure there's access into the commercial district across the way, and we're okay with that. On, I'd like to speak to the architecture very quickly. On the architecture, previous to the Planning Commission, we worked with staff at length to arrive at the current exterior product design. It's our understanding that staff likes the architecture because we worked with them on it. The rear elevations were enhanced in consideration of the neighbors up above, and since the Planning Commission meeting, we've done a couple of things. We lightened the colors like John showed you. We removed the hat-type of architecture with the knee braces on it. The AC units on the rooftops were screened prior to the Planning Commission. They're grouped and screened, and if you'd like a moderately different design or if the city desires that there's a Santa Barbara type of Spanish style, maintaining our structural, our structures that we have in our units, we're more than happy to do that. So that's traffic and architecture so far. On landscaping, we asked our landscape architect, John Patterson, who's here today, during the design effort to make sure that the trees on the slopes properly screen the community to the best effort. He has prepared a narrative and is more than happy to speak to that if you have questions for him because an effort has been made to correct, to select the proper trees that will grow at a reasonable rate and screen the community from up above as soon as possible. And he is sensitive to what works and what doesn't work because he argued with us about As to the rents, affirmed housing has been... As to the rents, Affirmed Housing has been a affordable housing developer for, I believe, about twenty years, and we have about three thousand units in operation. This particular effort is a market-rate apartment community. The rents are going to be at the upper end of the rental market. That's the way the project was designed financially. That's what we need to have it do. We have Solari Enterprises. We have two representatives here tonight I mentioned earlier. Their property management group that manages our affordable communities, they also manage other market-rate communities. We have a list of amenities that we intend to include in our community, but first, I'd like to address the rents. One bedrooms from fifteen hundred and fifty dollars a month up to three bedrooms at twenty-one hundred a month, and we're going to do everything we can to push those rents higher. Those numbers have actually come up about five percent since the project was proformed, and by the time it opens in a year and four months or so, assuming we get your approval, the rents will probably be a total of ten percent for those numbers I just quoted you. Amenities for the community, we're looking at, you know, how do we achieve this upper end? Wi-Fi throughout the community, an executive business there in the clubhouse. It's a couple of keyboards, computers for people's use, controlled access entry, we're looking at that. We don't know if it's the right thing for the neighborhood, but if, you know, it's something that we are looking at, and we'll have to do site studies on it. Dog washing stations, resort-inspired pool and spa with one cabana, a basketball half-court at one of the locations in the parking area, twenty-four fitness, twenty-four-hour fitness center with cardio machines, rec room with widescreen T V and pool table, and it's also a green-friendly community. Solar photovoltaics to offset expenses for us for community areas and swimming pools, solar hot water heating. As to onsite recycling, I'm sorry, online payments available, garages and carports. We've got a few barbecue grills outdoors for people to commune and socialize. We have onsite maintenance. We'll also have an onsite resident manager and possibly an assistant that will live onsite, and this is pretty typical for us. Outdoor fireplace pit, package receiving, and maybe the opportunity, we think, to assign a few units to, short-term leases for people that are relocating. Inside the units, upgraded stainless steel, finished appliances, granite countertops. So my point is, we're trying to make the effort to acquire the rents that we need to make the project work. Our tenants are, from our market studies, are going to be working families, they're going to be singles, upwardly mobile echo boomers, college graduates, twenty-five to thirty-four years of age range, who consciously rent rather than, rather than buy, and they are attracted to highly amenitized complexes. I think that, that the important things to note are the one percent traffic load up, up Cypress. I think the other things to note are the impact to Mar Vista and Avocado. We're more than willing to pay our traffic fair share if there's some improvements needed. We've, we've talked to city staff about that. On fees, you know, we're paying over two million dollars in fees. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it are going to be for water. The, the site is secured for water rights. There is enough water to service it. And finally, I'd like to let you know that at Affirmed, we are green builders. We've received a number of awards for lead goal communities, some lead platinum, and excessive use of solar photovoltaics is just what we do, day in, day out, between the designers, the project managers, and our construction managers, and our owners and operators. We are the owners. And lastly, I'd like to let you know that with Paseo Point under construction, an affordable community in your city, that we will be property owners within the city for fifty years. So if there's any specific questions that haven't been addressed at this point, we'd be happy to address them, or if you'd like to speak to, to some of our team, property managers, the traffic consultant, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. So now, council, it's up to you. It is your pleasure. Anyone? Anyone want to go first?
I'll, I'll go. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I want to say thank you to all of the residents who came out here tonight to talk to us and to let us know your feelings on, on this issue. I did go out, and I want to say thank you to Wendy's for hosting me this afternoon or this morning to see the property. I'd been out there previously, so I'm familiar with the neighborhood, but there were some specific concerns that Wendy's had, so she invited me over, and we went, we talked, we drove around, we had lunch, so I want to say thank you for that. I appreciate it. I do recognize that Affordable is, is a good steward of, of the community, and, and I know that we have another project here that we're working with you, and you are a reputable company, and I like doing business with you here in this city. I, I did have some concerns, and I expressed them when we met previously, about the design of the, the buildings, and I know that there had been some comments made that they're similar to other projects in town. I voiced my opinion at the time, ones that, that I was on council for. I didn't like the design of those either. I think, I think, I just, I don't think that this particular design fits in with this neighborhood, and that's one of the things that I have been trying to, one of the things that I've, I have, I think I have tried to stay true to in myself and for Vista. Vista is a very, I, we're, we're a large city, almost a hundred thousand, but we have different neighborhoods, and I think each neighborhood has its own flavor and its own charm, and, and I don't want to take away from that and homogenize the entire hundred thousand people. Having said that, I think that there isn't, there is a need for some apartments in different parts of the city. I think, I, we talked about this as well, the density. I, I'm not happy with the number of units here. I think it's high density, and we did talk about the parking issue, because I think I shared with you some of the other issues around the city, that we have some seriously impacted roads with parking, and, and the traffic, I'm not sure what we can, we can do with that, and I think, I don't know if the city attorney is going to be addressing that later. I'm not sure. But those were my concerns, were, were the parking and the design of it. I am not opposed to having a residential complex here. I'm just, don't, I, I think the density is, is a bit much, and I know that with the state, the, the mandate is that if certain requirements are met, the city is obligated to allow the density bonus. That is something I think is out of our hands, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not a fan of the state telling us what we can and can't do, so I'm just going to put that on the record. So I just wanted to say, I did have a question for, for somebody, and I'm not sure, Mr. Conley, if it would be you that would answer this question, but I, I think the point was, was well-made about turning left, coming out from the development onto Santa Fe. From this project, they'll be able to turn right or left, but Cypress, and I was out there and I've seen it as I drive up and down Santa Fe, Cypress coming out, you cannot turn left. And I, to answer some of their, their questions, and, and for my own edification, why would it be all right to turn left coming out of the development but not across the street where Cypress is, being able to make a left from there as well?
The reason Cypress is restricted to right only coming out is to reduce the amount of cut-through traffic that comes from Monavista down Cypress onto South Santa Fe. That was a decision made by the Traffic Commission several years ago, and that is the reason for the right turn restriction, because some of the neighbors on Cypress asked the council to do something to reduce the traffic that's cutting through their neighborhood.
And, and you said that was Traffic Commission that had discussed that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I, having, like I said, I drive Santa Fe, so I'm familiar with, with the neighborhood, and then when Wendy's and I were out there today, there are speeders. I think traffic is an issue, and speeding is an issue, and even on Cypress, we saw several people speeding through Cypress. I'm, that is definitely a problem that needs to be addressed on some level. Whether that is going, how, how much more of an impact this community will have on that, I'm not sure, but I do see that that's an issue that needs to be addressed, and I'm not sure when we can talk about that. I don't have a problem particularly. I like this project. I think the design and the density could be, could be looked at differently. One of the other issues that, that came up, and I know, I talked to some staff about it, and it was also brought up by a community member earlier. The, the project, the development, is one entrance and one exit, which is on Santa Fe. Recently, we had these really horrible wildfires where people were impacted by that. In the event, some emergency happened, and I know that this butts up against the train tracks and the sprinter going through, but in the event, God forbid, something horrible was happening at the front end of this, could there be an emergency exit access onto Mar Vista or something to allow the residents out of the community through the back or, or something? Is that even feasible? I don't know who to address that question to.
That's probably a question better answered by the applicant's civil engineer.
Okay. Is that something that, in addition to, we talked earlier, and you, and it was commented that perhaps a traffic circle at Mar Vista Avocado or something might be feasible to help the flow of traffic continue moving? There are a couple of things that maybe we could look at. I, I'm not sure.
We can definitely look at a traffic circle or some traffic improvements at the intersection of Mar Vista and Avocado.
And at the same time, look at the feasibility of maybe a back access to the property to allow people out that direction if necessary in the event of an emergency?
I guess we could look at an alternative access. I don't know that it would be needed for emergency purposes. The fire departments reviewed the plan, and they approved the dual driveway scenario because it provides two access points on the site, even though they're adjacent. They felt that they could adequately get in and out of the site with the proposed design.
Okay, okay.
But I'm happy to invite the fire chief up here to address that if you'd like. I know he's in the back waiting to come up and talk.
Chief Minnick? I, I don't, I don't mind hearing from Chief Minnick on this because it is a question, because we're talking about just the one driveway. Am I, am I mistaken in that? I don't think so.
You're on, Chief Minnick.
Good evening. Rick Minnick, Fire Chief. Question?
The, the question was from the, and it had been discussed previously, and then community member had brought it up earlier. The entrance and exit to this development is one entrance, one exit, which is onto Santa Fe. In the event of an emergency, like we just, you know, went through in May with the fires and the evacuations, if, God forbid, in an emergency, the front end of this development is what is impacted, how are people going to get out through the back end? So I was asking if it's possible to have an emergency access on the side going out to Mar Vista, because I, I know the train tracks are back here, and then on the side, the south side, I'm not sure what's available over there. But it was, I, I think Mr. Conley mentioned that you had already looked at these plans and approved them, that there was enough access on the front to accommodate any emergency that might happen?
That's correct. We reviewed it, and it's, the, the access is appropriate for fire access. In the event of emergency, we still felt that it was comfortable. It meets the fire code for that particular project.
Okay.
Councilmember, as Mr. Conley stated earlier, maybe it'd be better to have the civil for the applicant come up and address that type of question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Minnick. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is somebody coming up? Drawing straws back there.
This is Lindsey Quackenbush from Affirmed.
I got the short straw, huh?
Yeah. Civil engineering degree, never did anything with it, so just discard that completely. But I do understand the site, and the question you're asking is, where could a second entry be if it's possible? There is, you know, I don't think you want to put a second operating entry on Mar Vista. There is a grade differential there you'd have to deal with. I, I believe what John mentioned is, the entry, if you envision it, is really two entries side by side, so you'd have to have some catastrophic event that closes two, I believe, twenty-four-foot-wide drives.
Okay.
And that's what the fire department looks at. Now, another suggestion could be two separate driveways in and out on Mar Vista. I don't know that that's a benefit to the community, the development, or, or the traffic situation, so.
Okay.
You know, can you shift the entry one way or the other? I don't think that addresses your concern, but, you know, we're comfortable, and certainly, fire is the toughest department that we ever have to deal with.
Right.
Because they really look at it closely.
Okay.
And we pass muster.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I think you might be referring to an emergency access, not a permanent access.
Right, an emergency, right. Not a, not a daily operating one, but an emergency access, and it was, it was a concern that a constituent brought up with this in light of the recent fires and the evacuations and people having to go different directions, so I just wanted to have that point clarified. Thank you very much. I think those were all of my concerns, the density, the design of it, fitting into the community there, the neighborhood there, so.
To follow along with your thought train, I wasn't going to go next, but if there was an accident right outside there at that corner, they wouldn't be able to get in and out of there, I, I wouldn't think, so I, I'm following your thought train, that there should be one other access, whether it's an emergency or a way to get in and out of there, just in case. That, that was my thought. Long as I'm speaking, I'll just go, go ahead and do this, but just so all of you know, I, I'm from Vista. I'd been from Vista. My, I brought my kids up here. I lived on Valley Drive, and I've traveled Monavista and Cypress and Mar Vista for forty years, so my kids all went to Monavista, they all went to Lincoln. I traveled, you know, we drove around all the time, so I'm very familiar with, with where you are. I was, I'll go through some of my things that I wrote down here, that, the, one of the things that I, and I've met with the developer here, and, and they've, Affirmed has done some nice housing projects. I, I don't have, you know, that's, that's one thing, but I, I don't like particularly this one, and I'm going to tell you why. And if you go to the picture of the garages for me, the one that has all the pictures of all those garages, because I, I always like, well, you know, what if I wanted to live at this apartment? And so.
Mr. Conley, can you change it, the picture?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
The picture? Hello? Don't go to sleep yet. Move all the garage, yeah, that, go back, that one. When I look, I look at all those garages there, and when I questioned the applicant, and they said, you know, I said, well, if I've lived in one of those apartments, you know, would I be assigned the garage right, right there, and could I go through the garage to the apartment? And the answer was, no, that I would be assigned to any of those garages, and, and in order to get into those apartments, there's no access behind the garages, so you can't open a door and go in. You have to go all the way down to the end and walk in the apartment, and I, so I always compare that with the Monarch Apartments, which I think are, are high-quality and, and really nice apartments, and they're, and, and if you're looking for, I like the demographics that you told me about there, you know, I thought that they were the right demographics that we'd like to see there, but I wouldn't rent a house there, because I, if I had to get my groceries and park my car and then walk all the way down to the end, and maybe I had to make a couple trips, I, you know, that, it's just not convenient, and so I don't like, I just don't like the design of it. That's the, the architecture. That, that would be my thing. But I also, I don't, also don't like, I, I worry about parking on the street, because I, I know that a lot of the things that we've built in the past all overflow onto the street with the parking, because I know that everybody has teenage kids and a couple cars in the family, so, um, what else? On Cypress, you know, I, with the problems you're having on there, I, I, I don't have a problem if you wanted to make a cul-de-sac out of that. I don't know if the city, maybe, we don't usually sell. I think Vista, we don't usually, you know, block off streets, but I, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't see why people would cut through there. I think it takes, it's not any shorter to go down to Monavista and go that way. I, I don't get why people cut through there. I, I've driven there a few times, but I mostly went down Monavista, so, um, what else? And, and as far as, you know, apartments, I know that I have, my grandkids are like twenty and twenty-one, and I don't know if they'll ever be able to afford houses in Vista either, because I, I'm also a realtor, and so I, you know, I, I, I think that we need some apartments, and we need some nice apartments where that, you know, the nice, where people that have families can live, you know, because we're talking about, we want people to live here and work in Vista, so we want to have some nice apartments. I, I agree, we don't need too many apartments, but I think that we need some nice apartments or, and/or condos, and I live in a neighborhood that's, that's residential, and next door to me is a condo project. There's a lot of condos there, so it's all. So it's all totally, it's off, off of Vista. So it's, you know, clearly what you're saying, you're all residential around there. Well, we are all residential also, but then we have this condo unit and also like a little apartment unit. And, and it's okay. Our neighborhood is still safe and it, and it works out fine there. So, I mean, I, the, the thing you have to think about is you have, that vacant lot is there. So you have three choices: residential, and I don't see anybody as a realtor building single-family houses in there to, to live there, next to a mortuary and, and there, on the rail line. I don't see people doing that. So then your choices are something commercial or, or a multifamily. And so commercial would have people in and out all day long, and I think that it would be more traffic, and I think that the stats show that, than it would be if you had, you know, a, a housing project, a multifamily housing project. So if we could get a good quality one, maybe not quite, quite so dense. I, I don't know. That would be my thoughts. And I'll, I'll leave it to, listen to the rest of my council here. So I have Councilmember Coles has got his button put.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments that people have provided tonight. And you brought up many of the questions that I had in my mind when this project first came for us to review and consider. The dilemma we have, and Cliff has left, but I, I think he captured the essence of, we've painted ourselves into a corner. I mean, this, this part of Vista, the exit of Vista, has been kind of pushed back and pushed back, and there's this huge, dry piece of vacant land there that nobody has known what to do with. And the owner has tried a lot of different avenues of making it into something profitable for, for his investment. And whether or not this is the best use, I, I think the problem we have is this is privately owned property. It's property that, the plan that he has before us is, is legal by all standards that, that we're faced with as a city council. Whether I like it or not, it, it may not be something that I could vote no on it, and I would be overruled by a court maybe. I don't know. I'm going to find that out. The, I think the thing that we need to do now is help entice the owner developer into making this into a project that would blend in with that part of our community. And he, he, he did, in the last comment, said that there's an alternative design that, that they might be able to consider. I'm not sure what that is. I'd like to see it. Mr. Conley, one thing I've noticed in some cities and some communities is before a development is actually undertaken for approval, they have to put sticks up or they have to put some kind of visual indication of what this is going to look like, what, what the, the roof lines will look like and what the extremities will shape up to. What, what is it that some communities use that and others don't? What, tell me a little bit about that.
Those are referred to as story poles, and yes, they're generally placed in the location of the proposed structures, at the height of the structure, to give property owners around the project an opportunity to determine what the impact of their view would be. That's typically in communities that have view protection ordinances, but it occurs in communities that don't as well.
Okay. Have, have we ever considered doing anything like that? We don't have much high-rise, I know, but it certainly would have given a lot of people an indication of what might be going on in this particular area. I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just.
We could amend our code to require that, certainly.
And I'm not even sure that we need to do that, but I was kind of curious how that process works. I agree that, that the Cypress, I think, we didn't think that this was going to be a, a point of interest for this development because Cypress is fought to be out of the, the line of fire for this project. But obviously, as we've heard tonight, it, it is of concern to the people who live on Cypress. It's interesting, the first time I went from Chatter Ridge to Bringle Terrace, the GPS sent me on Cypress. And it's, it's, it's really not the best, like you've said, it's a windy, sort of a cruel road. And when you come back, you can't even go on Cypress to, to get back over to Santa Fe. And, and whoever did the time study to show that it's just as fast to turn from Mar Vista to Montevista and then over to Bringle Terrace, thank you for that because I, I think that's a, a good reason why we might be able to put a cul-de-sac on Cypress and, and stop that. That, that should not be, in my opinion, my humble opinion, should not be a shortcut. It should be servicing the residents in that, in that area. So, kind of, you know, the traffic issue, I think the roundabout, I was pleased when you first suggested that as a way to, to help keep the traffic moving through Avocado and Mar Vista and, and that area. I think that's really something that we should undertake to look at. The property owner has the right to, to build a project there that fits within the state, the city, and, and the guidelines, that we can't stop him from doing that. But what I would like to do is work with the developer to mitigate the issues that have been brought to us tonight, to make some modifications maybe to the design. When I met with the developer the first time, I suggested, if, if you really want this to be an upscale complex, go look at Monarch. Look at what they've done there. And there are a lot of designs in that project that could really enhance and even allow for higher rent and maybe a, a better payback for the investment. So those are kind of how I feel. Now, what is, what do we have to do tonight? We've been asked to delay this. Is a delay to look at some other designs appropriate? Or are we at a point where we have to act on this? What, what is the process we have to do here tonight?
According to my paper here, we have, you have four choices. You can approve it, you can approve, you can conditionally approve it, you can deny it, or you continue it. I'm going to ask the applicant to agree to the, the continuance, or you can, if you want to, you deny it, you can direct the staff to a fair resolution of denial. Or if you want to do a conditional approval, you can base it on the following findings, or.
Oh, Darryl can talk.
Darryl pushed his button.
Yes.
You're pushing my button.
With the applicant's consent, I might suggest that the sentiments of the council are such that the applicant be requested to meet again with staff, to discuss the issues that have been raised, including the traffic issues and the design issues, and to refer the matter back after discussion with staff to the planning commission for review of those issues, then with the final decision to come back to the city council.
That.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Well, I wasn't quite done.
I'm sorry.
That's why I asked that question. What are our options? And because of what we've heard tonight, new information that's really come to me, new offers by the, the developer, maybe we should continue this so that we can look at some of the other design options, some of the other traffic options that were presented here tonight. And Mr. Conley, you're making a gesture. Is that?
Yeah, we can absolutely do all that.
Yeah. And so we, we need the approval of the applicant to be able to do that?
Let's hear all the speakers first.
Okay.
Was that a motion? That was a motion, then?
Was that a motion?
I wasn't making a motion. I was just trying to get clarification.
Continue it?
If we can just do that unilaterally, or do we have to have their agreement to continue it under those circumstances?
If we didn't have their agreement, I would simply recommend that we continue the matter, refer them back to staff, and then bring it back to the council for a decision.
Do we need a motion for that?
At some point, we would. Yes.
Then I would move that we do that.
I'll, I'll, I will second that, but I do know that other council members want to speak to the issue.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera would like to speak.
Seems to make sense to listen to everyone. Thank you.
Fight for the floor.
First of all, you know, this is a, a good project, but it's not a great project. And that is a, a great neighborhood over there. I've, I've lived in Vista all my life, so I, I know this area very well. I know Sunset, or, uh, Mar Vista, I'm sorry. And, you know, Mar Vista's probably just never going to improve unless, I mean, we spend millions and millions of dollars. It's always going to be a problem. So I think you all know that. I know that. The developer knows that. And we do need to address, though, the issues that are there. So I do like the idea of the traffic circle. I think that's something that needs to be investigated. I know that the developer is paying hundreds of thousands of dollars towards traffic impact fees. So I think that's money that we can use towards something like a traffic circle and improving that area. So I'd like to have staff look into that with the developer. Not in favor of a signal necessarily. I think that is, you know, well, I'm against stop signs and signals, so that's just not a good idea. But it would really take away, I think, from that area. That area is, it starts to become more rural. And I do have to agree with Mr. Looney. I think the architectural part of this design, and that's probably the area that I think needs the most improvement. I think Councilman Coles made a great suggestion. I'm sure you've seen Monarch and that. We discussed it when we got together some weeks back. I think that's a good example of what might fit in this area and really add to the area. So I think that would be a, a great idea for you guys to, to sit down with staff and figure out how that's going to work and pencil out for you guys. Because I know that that's, all of these things cost money. And I understand that there is the need for the developer to, to develop this and, and put little dollars in his pocket as well. Now, as far as Cypress, I, I want to thank Windis for contacting me. So we had a long conversation. At that time, she didn't realize that this was actually pulled, so I got to hear the whole thing. And, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the people that are here. And, you know, this is the way it's supposed to work, council meetings, have people show up and stand up for their rights, make their opinions known. I think that's good. So Cypress, obviously, is something that was overlooked, and, and we need to see what the impact is there. I, I understand that your traffic person, you know, didn't feel that it was going to be much of an impact, and, and maybe it won't be. I don't know. But that's what we need to find out. So I think that is important to find out. And I think that if we went further tonight, I mean, this could potentially be denied. So I think that idea of continuing is the way to go. Because I think there is some safety concerns here, possibly with Cypress, you know, being an issue. The, and this is something that probably the mayor didn't even realize she was bringing up. But I mean, there's a, a safety concern with those garages. I'm thinking you're looking at attracting 24 to 35-year-old, uh, single professionals. Well, in today's world, that's 50% women. And I, I would think that a woman would not be attracted to having to park her car in the evenings into a garage and walking outdoors. And I know we've talked about that, and there's going to be security, but I think that's something that still needs to be investigated a little bit further. In addition to that, I don't know where this hazardous waste thing came from, and I don't know if that's been resolved or what have you. Has that been addressed in the EIR?
There's a Phase 1 environmental site assessment for the site that evaluated the past uses of the property, but we'll go back and look at the comments on Creoso tonight and make sure that those are all addressed in the report.
Okay. And then there was another comment made about the traffic impact report being old or based on 2000 surveys.
There's traffic impact study guidelines that Sandag releases.
Okay.
And they are the guidelines for which the studies are prepared. It tells you how to go about preparing the study. The last time it was updated was in 2000.
Okay, so that's not the report, then?
No. The report was prepared in 2013.
That's based on. Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification on that. So with that, I would support the idea of continuing this. Because something's going to get developed there, and I just think we need to find out what the best project is and something that fits in the community. So, thank you.
Councilor Coles has one more thing to say, then.
There was one more comment that I meant to bring up. And now that Santa Fe has been improved, at least, at least partially up to Robulini or almost to Robulini, that may, in coming years, as that's improved all the way through further, help with some traffic mitigation for people who choose other routes than Mar Vista to get to 78. They can get to it on the Santa Fe intersection. So that may, has that been taken into account, that will traffic flow smoother and maybe in larger travel units once Santa Fe is improved all the way through?
The traffic report assumes Santa Fe is fully built out by 2030. However, it's a county project, so we don't control its destiny.
Yeah.
It's in their CIP, but unfunded to the tune of $50 million, I think. So it's a big project.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Robulini has to be fixed first before they can get to the freeway quick.
Well, I know.
Attorney Darryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Rigby and Councilman Coles, did I understand your motion to be, to continue the public hearing until August the 26th?
Yes, sir, you did.
Thank you.
I, I don't remember that date, but that sounds good to me.
Thank you.
And do it, and on here, it also says they have to make a statement of findings on which the motion is based. Do we have to do that?
No, this is simply a continuation of the public hearing.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so do we have to vote on it, then?
Yes.
Are we all through? Everybody? Everybody? Okay. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Now I have to find my agenda. Where did it go? Okay. Moving on to our second public hearing, collection of delinquent sewer charges. I'll open that public hearing.
Mayor, would you like a staff report on that?
Would you like a staff report?
Do we have any speakers?
Can we just vote?
No speakers. No.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve?
Second.
Okay. Cast your ballots.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We appreciate your time and energy.
Motion passes with one no vote. The next thing is public hearing number three. I'll open that public hearing, levy of delinquent property-related administrative citation charges.
Is there a report?
Any speakers?
Anybody? No, no speakers.
No speakers.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve.
Second.
Okay. Please cast your ballot. Motion passes unanimously. Opening public hearing number four, collection of delinquent weed debatement charges. Would you like a report? There's no speakers. Nope. I need a motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. We closed the public hearing, didn't we? Yes. Public hearing number five. I'll open the public hearing, levy of assessments for the fiscal year 2014-15. Would you like a staff report?
No, ma'am.
No, thank you.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and, and adopt.
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Next thing on our agenda are our remarks. Our oral communications, but I have no speaker, are there anybody? I have no, I have no speakers. Okay, so I have no oral communication, so then we'll go on to remarks. Councilmember Rigby, you want to start? start? Councilmember Rigby, you want to start?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. And thank you for those of you who are still here. Appreciate your time. I just wanted to say that I wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Colonel Trey Smith on his recent, I attended the change of command at HMLA 369 last Friday up at Camp Pendleton, and Trey Smith is moving on to a new post. He's going to Washington, DC, back to a school that I assume someday we will see him as the chairman of the Joint Chiefs. Anyway, I want to welcome Lieutenant Colonel Jamie Federico and his wife Alexis as the new commanding officer for HMLA 369. I met with them on Friday, a really nice couple, and I look forward to working with him. So also, I wanted to say that we had a good tour with the Surf Rider Foundation regarding the Ash Can project that I brought up at the last council meeting. We had three representatives from Surf Rider Foundation and one from I Love a Clean San Diego. We had a great walking tour through all of Vista Village, and we've identified places for 20 ash cans. And we're working on the funding, which will not have any city funding, so that's a good thing. We're looking at outside sources. And we anticipate that project should be done by the end of August. So, that'll be good. And the BMX, we met again. We toured a couple of more projects, our properties that had been brought up that perhaps they might work for us. So we toured them. The BMX people said that they would work, so we're contacting the property owners again to see if they really are interested. So, that's still on the table. We haven't given up. Still trying to talk to Mayor Abad and Councilmember Mastin Escondido that, no, we're not done here in Vista yet. So I know they're hoping, you know, maybe they can look at it again in the future. And then also, just to let you know that I'll be going to Sacramento next week on Wednesday for California League of Cities. I'm on the policy committee for the REVEN Tax Committee, so we're going to be talking about, I'm sure, the vehicle miles tax is one of the issues that's on our agenda, which I think everybody should keep track of. That's in addition to gas tax, not in Lua. So, anyway, looking forward to Wednesday night at Spamalot. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Coles?
Just two quick things. The Moonlight Gala was a real success last Saturday. I think they raised, what did they raise, a couple hundred thousand dollars or more? And, which is nothing but good news for our budget considerations. And the, like Councilwoman Rigby said, I'm looking forward to the Spamalot venture tomorrow night. I also want to compliment our Parks and Rec. My grandson is in the city camp program, I don't know what they call it, at Bringle Terrace. He's had two, he's come home in a better mood than he came home from school with the last few days. So, it's going well. He has a nice new red shirt, and he looks happy. And that's all.
Councilmember Campbell?
I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity last Friday. I was invited to attend the inaugural celebration for the new speaker of the Assembly, Tony Atkins, who's from San Diego region here. And I think that's going to be great for San Diego cities, making sure that we have a better voice up in Sacramento.
Councilmember Aguilera?
You know, I don't have any comments, other than our sports park is getting heavily used right now. The little leagues are all having playoffs tournaments. We have teams from Oceanside, Bonzal, Fallbrook, so all over North County playing there in our beautiful sports park. So it's well-used. And if you want to go see something for free that's fun, come see baseball.
Okay. I just have a couple of things. Tomorrow evening, as the moonlight summer season starts with Monty Python's Spamalot, which I'm looking forward to seeing. The show runs from June 11th to July 18th, and the ticket information is available online at vistexonline.com. And then, our first movie in the park is coming up on Saturday, June 21st, at the Buena Vista Ball Field. A free movie is Frozen, which my granddaughter watches that at least once a day and sometimes twice. She sings, you know, "Let it go, let go." So come early, bring a blanket and a picnic, and have a fun night out with the kids. The movie begins at 8:00. Check online with cityofvista.com for the details on that. And one more thing, the fifth annual Taste of Vista is set for Wednesday, June 25th. I haven't got my glasses on here. From 4:00 to 8:00 in downtown Vista. This is a great event for food lovers to taste delicious samples of food from many of our local restaurants. And it's delicious. They have so much great food down there. This is a great event. Mark your calendars for the fun event. Again, it's June 25th from 4:00 to 8:00. Tickets are on sale at VVBA.org. And other than that, I just have one other thing. The Chamber had their retreat, was it Thursday or Friday? Friday? Gosh, I can't remember. And they gave Brett Schatzembach a proclamation, and they recognized him for his time serving the Chamber, because he's done an excellent job with the Chamber. And just a lot of things we didn't know about Brett, that he was, you know, he graduated from Vista High School, which I don't know that. He was summa cum laude graduate from Franciscan University. He graduated an IB diploma from Vista High School. I didn't know all those things about him. So, anyway, he's served in our community for a long time, has a good family. And so, congratulations to Brett. And that's all I have. City manager?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted to let everybody know that the senior center, along with the Sheriff's Department, is holding a crime, a Free Crime Prevention Community Day. And that'll be tomorrow at the Thibodeau Center from 11:30 to 12:30. And that'll be during the lunch hour. And the third and final Bicycle Master Plan workshop is scheduled for Thursday, June 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Civic Center at the Morris B. Events Community Center. So, that'll be where the final Bicycle Master Plan will be presented to the community, the design, and then it'll come before the council in late summer. So I just want to let you know that. I also wanted to say thank you to Laura Johnson and to Jeanette Ferris for all their work on the operating budget. Glad that it was adopted tonight, and we have a good budget going into next year. And I want to echo what Mr. Connelly said about the capital improvement program budget, and thanks to John, Greg Mayer, as well as Jeanette Ferris, Mary Kazungu, and Dale Nielsen for their work on that budget. So.
Great job on our balances budget. No more structural deficit. So that's good news for the year.
That is correct.
And our attorney, do you have anything today?
I would just like to compliment the Moonlight Cultural Foundation, the Moonlight Angels for putting on an excellent gala.
That was an excellent gala. It was. How about our city clerk, Marsha Killian? Amanda? No? Okay. With that, we're adjourned. What time is it? 8:49?
I also just want to say thank you. I was remiss. Thank you, staff, for all of your hard work and dedication, and particularly, Mr. Connelly, for all of your work on the appeal tonight. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.